...church will lead us in prayer this morning. Good morning, welcome.
Good morning, thank you. Well, Heavenly Father, we just thank you for today. Lord, another day in paradise. And Lord, we thank you for those who are chosen to represent our community. Father, we pray that you would give them great wisdom, understanding, and good judgment for all that they do. Lord, I pray for our community. Lord, I pray for unity, for neighborly love, for caring and kindness towards one another. Father, we ask you to bless and watch over those men and women who protect and serve us and serve our community day after day. Lord, we ask you also bless our armed forces wherever they're serving. And Lord, bless all those that call Benita Springs home and those that are here for a season. Lord, and we ask you to bless our country, the United States of America. We pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen, thank you very much. Deputy Mayor Gibson, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba.
Here.
Councilwoman Carr.
Here.
Mayor Simmons.
Here.
Councilwoman Gibson.
President.
Councilwoman Forbes.
President.
All right, good morning, everybody. Thanks for being here. We have a nice crowd this morning. If folks want to find their seats, I know some folks are just getting here, but come on in, we're going to get started here. And we're going to start with public comment on agenda items. Any members of the public that would like to speak on agenda items, please come forward at this time. Morning, John.
Morning, Mayor, Council. My name is John Pano, for the record, and I represent the Benita Springs Downtown Alliance and CGT Kayaks. First off, I just wanted to thank you folks for everything you do for us. Your leadership has been so important in the way this city has developed, and I have to say, I just love this city. This past weekend, we had a great weekend in Riverside Park with the art festival, a lot going on, people all over, and it's the way it should be. I've come today to speak about item 7D, food vendors, and about 7E. First off, on the food vendors, what I've heard a lot as a representative of the Alliance is the local vendor, the local merchants would like to have the ability to open up their lots and bring in their own catering and their own trucks and be able to do these kinds of services on their sites, much like Taco Tuesday attempted to do and is attempting to do in the past. Allowing the restaurant owners to have permits to do this instead of limiting it to just five would really help us all out, and it would enhance downtown and also control what comes in and out of downtown. Just wanted to share, those were the thoughts that I've been hearing. 7E is the skate park, and having been or still am a white-haired child that likes to skateboard, I, this is just a tremendous thing for all the community. These things are family gathering places. A pump park, which is something which I absolutely enjoy with my, if you haven't seen me before, out on my big skateboard going up and down the street. This would just be a fun place for people my ages and, of course, the kids. It would give them a place to be and restore the once really active skate community that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Welcome.
Welcome, thank you. Morning, Council. Morning, Mayor. My name is Aaron Thomas, CGT Kayaks, and I'm also a resident of District Four. I'm here on, to talk about 7E, the skateboard park. There's not too many things that happen in a sense that where community can come together with the city and also an engineer with Stan Tech. I was, I was able to sit on the two workshops on designing this skateboard park, and this is a true community skateboard park. This was designed by our residents here in Benita Springs in southwest Florida. When we're at the design committee, people are coming from all over. We had people from Punta Gorda, from Cape Coral, coming to Benita Springs wanting this skateboard park. I'm here to ask the Council and the Mayor for your support for funding for this, for the ability to us be able to reach out for grants. Skateboard parks bring in revenue to the city. I'm just thinking about sitting in this meeting and all these folks coming from other communities to Benita Springs to skate. They come here, they use our restaurants, they enjoy our facilities. We have the best beaches here in Benita Springs. We have the best parks. We should have the best skateboard park. I also do want to mention, it's kind of exciting in the skating community. Skateboarding isn't a summer Olympic sport, first time this year. And unlike traditional sports, these athletes come out of local skateboard parks. This is something that you don't get a varsity sport in in high school, you don't go to college on skateboard scholarships. This is stuff that comes out of our community. And I really think we build this awesome skateboard park. There's nothing like it in southwest Florida. Maybe we could have an Olympic athlete come out of Benita Springs and represent us in the Summer Olympics soon. Thank you for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Good morning, welcome.
Hi, my name's Kate Hahn. I'm here to talk about the mobile food vendors. And first, I just want to thank you, Council, for bringing this up at the last meeting and bringing it again to, to talk about the details and iron out what needs to be done to make improvements. I'm happy to see there's a great crowd here of people who are supporting this, some of the local food trucks, some of the other local breweries who have been using food trucks and building businesses, and they're local entrepreneurs. Many of the food trucks that we've been working with are Benita residents who want to stay and do business in Benita. So, we want to offer our help. We have some good experience. We have lots of connections in the community with the food trucks in the other cities and within Lee County who can give good ideas. So, please reach out to us. We're here to help. We have some good ideas on maybe what some of the determining factors should be for the food trucks, how changing the rules, you know, which rules could be changed to make it better for all businesses in Benita. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Thanks for being here. Good morning, welcome.
Good morning. My name is Stephen Brown, and I am here representing not only my restaurant and mobile food vending solution, but I'm also president of the Southwest Florida Food Truck Association. We'd like to thank you for putting this on the agenda today and for taking the time to consider what we can do to improve the food truck regulations locally. We fully, as the Southwest Florida Food Truck Association, fully understand and support the need for regulations. In fact, without regulations, this would be the Wild West. Unfortunately, the current regulations are not fair and equitable, and we hope there will be a change soon. In recent weeks, there have been many myths bandied about, about food trucks. Those myths have been disproved countless times. However, much like I cannot convince some people that the earth isn't flat, I cannot convince some people that food trucks are not beneficial. What we at the Southwest Florida Food Truck Association hope to do is work with each one of you to better understand what we can do to improve these regulations. We have the experience of the National Food Truck Association behind us. We have the experience of all the food trucks that are here locally, as well as our experience of doing this on a daily basis. While I unfortunately have to leave shortly after this meeting because I do have another event to go to, I hope to meet with each and every one of you in the next week or two so we can discuss how we can improve this, so we can discuss how we can work together, not only with local government, but local businesses, as well as residents who have concerns. We're here to make this a success. We're here to help Benita Springs become a success, and we want to make sure that the regulations affect us all equally. Thank you so much for your time.
Wonderful, thank you. And please make sure we know how to get in touch with you if you'd like to. Yeah, thank you very much.
Hi, good morning.
Welcome, good morning.
Mark Foter. I am the owner of a franchise called the Original Dave Cosmic Subs. You've probably seen my truck on the highway or around the community. It's peace-loving subs, it's very hippie-ish. You know, I have to go under rules already as a franchisee, and I got into the mobile food vending business to test the market, to build then a franchise store, and then expand in Florida. Originally from Cleveland, Ohio, Dave's Cosmic Subs, it's legendary up in Cleveland, it's voted number-one sandwich. You know, since a franchise myself, and then in my prior life, I was a CEO of a small software company that we sold. I did global consulting for top-five consulting. So, I think there's myths about owner-operators, they're great people, and what we want to do is help change regulations on both sides, police ourselves, because we want to, you know, we have to serve quality, and we've got to protect citizens' health. I am vice president also of the Southwest Florida Food Truck Association, so I'm working with Stephen to help regulate ourselves and also work with you. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Please come forward. Good morning, welcome.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, Chris Magnus. It's really exciting, really encouraging to see the, the work that you guys are doing with everything that's going on in the city. I think you guys are making great strides on some of the more draconian ordinances that we have. I would encourage Council to take a look and see what the RFP will bring to the city before codifying any changes. I think it's important that we've put all this money into the city, we've now finally got these properties up for sale. I think we need to see what it will be in these RFPs before we go changing ordinances and codes. Additionally, I would encourage city and Council to reduce the wait time on the RFPs for the smaller pieces, maybe cut it in half. The smaller pieces don't need all the time. That gives you guys to focus on the really big parcels, the crown jewel of Benita, on April 14th, where some of the other stuff can be done a little bit sooner. It gives business, business owners an opportunity to get shovels in the dirt and get things ready for the upcoming season. So, thank you so much for your time and your consideration.
Thanks, Chris. Thanks for being here. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Councilwoman Simons, welcome.
Great to see you. Thank you. Happy New Year. I also want to say happy birthday to the city of Benita Springs. I have something out of the Marth Archives. This is from 20 years ago. We're 20 years old, we're almost grown up. It's got a little anomaly on the back, but don't hesitate, incorporate, and home roll, vote 11 to, no, we didn't vote 11 to. I think we voted December 18th. I have to look that up, but we voted in December. Anyhow, why did we incorporate? We want a home roll, right? Okay, I heard somebody said they're going to help Benita become a success. We're one of the most successful cities in southwest Florida, right? A doubt? No, no doubt. From 20 years ago, when it was the Wild West, the county didn't really care about what happened down here on the, they used to call it the armpit of the county. Pretty disgusting. And we've come a long way. In 2012, there was a reason we passed this mobile food vendor ordinance, and the local restaurants came forward. I'm not a local restaurant, you was. I was a franchise, actually. I don't know, I don't see the chamber come here. I see some members of the chamber here, but they also came too, and some of the restaurant owners, because mobile food vending trucks were parking next to their restaurants. If you own a restaurant, you've made a significant investment in Benita Springs. Hood fan alone, what, $10,000? A grease trap? We're talking about tens of thousands of dollars just for these small things, and then maybe opening a, a small mom-and-pop restaurant, $50,000, $100,000, right? Get your COP license, get your beer or your wine. Okay, they're paying taxes, they're paying property taxes here, they're paying sales tax here, they are inviting people to come downtown. I'd really say, if you're going to modify, and there's some, there's some room for modifying this ordinance, do not put anything in Old 41. We, whatever your zoning is going to be to allow these, we have invested $55 million. If you add up, you know, the beautification project, the widening project, the park, sewers, all sorts of things over these last 20 years, it's got, it's got to be more than $55 million to attract brick-and-mortar companies, small business, preferably mom-and-pops, because I think that really makes an organic downtown, to come to Old 41. So, where could you possibly put these, you know, what zoning category could you put these? Or, would you, if someplace wants to have a food truck on their property or a couple food trucks, what kind of permit fee that would match somewhat the investment? Because you're talking about people are going to need to have waste, grease waste removed and, and things like that. And I know there are people that are more expert about this than I. Also, not just the competition with the commercial restaurants that are here, but our 501(c)(3) organizations that are here, the Eagles, the Moose, the Elks, the American Legion, the VFW, they're trying to bring people to come and eat at their establishments. Did I miss one? Lions Club, Pancake Breakfast. They're missing people, they're trying to attract people to their establishments. We also have a new restaurant opening up at the Card Room. So, you know, these people have made a significant investment, risked their family's fortunes to invest in our successful city, and I just want to make sure that we respect those brick-and-mortar restaurants and organizations that are already attracting people to our very successful 20-year-old city. And happy birthday, guys.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here.
About the good work. Oh, one thing I thought was really stupid about it was don't have neon paint. Ah, come on. I like neon paint. All right.
Take care. Thank you. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Please come forward. Good morning, sir. How are you?
Yes, good morning. Good morning, Mayor, good morning, Council. My name is Joe Fiatto. Been in Benita 13 years. My wife and I, over our, our history of owned restaurants in New York State, moved to Florida, entrepreneurial, invested $100,000 into a food truck. So, we do respect brick-and-mortar operations, but we didn't think we were being discriminated against by a fair market competition in the United States of America. So, with all due respect, the food truck world doesn't look to knock brick-and-mortar restaurants out of business. We try to enhance, as in some major cities around the country, they've actually revitalized areas that were completely depleted, i.e. Seattle, Washington, Portland, Oregon, some areas that actually brought to life areas that were just absolutely not going to have anything revitalize them. So, they've done some great things. We met with the mayor, we, we looked at an area called Area 11 that was zoned possibly for food trucks, maybe like a food truck park. Great idea. The only problem is the people that own the land have jacked up the prices, so they're looking at like a million eight for a certain piece of the property. So, there's some heavy investments, some ideas, but in short, what I'd really like to say is the food truck world is here, it's across the country, there's even reality TV shows now about them. It's every walk of life, it's high-quality. Like in anything, there's brick-and-mortar restaurants that you wouldn't want to go in and eat at either. So, it's all about quality, it's all about presentation, it's all about belief, it's all about identity, and not that Benita Springs isn't welcoming the ideas. Obviously, there are some things that I'm sure over the years have changed and that can change, but the food truck world is here. It's a, it's a big, bright future. It can enhance any community and offer just a wonderful array, a wonderful eclectic display of foods as they did in Naples, Florida with Celebration Park, and that is a small parcel. It's not even, I don't think it's an acre and a half. And they've been able to present, they've had some issues with zoning and parking, but as far as cause and effect, it's like a wonderful experience. People are flocking there every day of the week. We do pay sales tax, so that generates quite a bit of money. We don't pay property tax, but we do pay sales tax. Celebration Park pays heavy property tax as well. So, again, I, I just thank you. I wanted to speak up because we've, we've been part of just trying to, you know, open this world up to the rest of the world. So, I thank you all, and...
Wonderful, thank you very much. Thanks for being here. Other members of the public? Welcome. Good morning, ma'am.
My name is Diane Wilkins, and I live in Hunters Ridge. And I'm not a food truck vendor, I'm just a community citizen, and I enjoy going down to Momentum. So, I wanted to speak on their behalf because I followed all the publicity, and I think it's a wonderful venue, and we enjoy going down there from Hunters Ridge. And I live on the first street, and I'm not hearing the noise issue. I open my doors, New Year's to listen, and there's no noise. So, I don't know where all those rumors came from. Most of them, I have several neighbors here, and we're not having an issue with the noise from that. I think part of the delight of going to any of these venues where there are food trucks is you get a taste of Benita. You get a variety, and you can pick which night you want to go. If I want to go to Burger Tuesday, then I go down there, and there's a certain following that travels the food trucks. So, I'd like to not see it limited, and certainly in season, there's hardly room to get into your favorite restaurant anyway, so those of us who live here just wait until everybody leaves. So, I think it's a nice, in the holidays, I noticed how many people had visitors and people were just walking down to the venue, to the Momentum, because it was safe. You didn't have to drive, and you could just take off on your little feet and go down there. So, I would like to see the food truck adventure continue because it's enjoyable and it gives you just a taste of Benita.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your thoughts. Other members of the public? Good morning, sir.
Good morning. How are you guys? Thanks for everything you do. It takes a lot of work, and I know that, and I appreciate the work and time you put in. I'm Rick Wilkins, I live at Hunters Ridge too, and I'm here to really learn more about all the issues. I'm not sure I understand, I'm sure it's more complicated than it looks, and I'm sure you guys are going to give it some due diligence and figure out what's best for our community, so I appreciate that. Like my wife, we've enjoyed the food trucks. I think I've been three times in my life. I'm not a huge supporter, but I think it's nice to have the variety in a community. I think it enhances the community, I think it provides opportunities at festivals and different places that don't have restaurants to provide food for the community and make a difference. We were just recently at the Trade Boston Festival in Washington, and there were well over 20 food trucks on the mall there, and everybody seemed to really enjoy it. It was a good time. So, just asked you to consider all the different angles here, and from my standpoint, I think we ought to really increase the number of food trucks and make it available to more people, but also need to respect the investment other people have made in the community, too. So, thanks for your time, and good luck with the decisions.
Wonderful, thank you. Thanks for being here. Other members of the public?
Hi, my name's Tom Ralston. I live in Hunters Ridge as well. And I just want to second some of the things that were said about Momentum. They're a wonderful neighbor. We don't have a lot of stuff on the east side to, a lot, a lot of options, so it's been a real asset, we think, to the community. I'm about the sixth or seventh house directly from there, so I'm very close. There's, there was a rumor about, they're a wonderful neighbor, we don't hear anything. So, anyway, we appreciate them, and the city's growing, obviously, since the ordinance, so we hope that you'll consider expanding it, so it's an option for us. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Good morning, welcome.
Good morning, yeah, Council. My name is Melanie Fiatto. I own the Roland Penn, which I, my husband Joe and I established within the last year, and we have just hit one brick wall after another to able to go out and do business in Benita because of the zoning and the permits. And one thing that I really would like to say, and I have a strong restaurant background, any restaurant that's in Benita Springs should welcome competition, whether they've been in business 20 years or five years. Competition is good, and my dedication and money spent in insurance and quality of my food is probably, I put just as much into it as that restaurant owner. Of course, I don't have the headache of payroll and, you know, the whole restaurant nightmare because I've lived that, but they should warrant competition, and they should also understand that in season, I can't get into a restaurant at 7 o'clock at night, and if they're not doing business, maybe they shouldn't be in business, these established restaurants. So, we need other venues for restaurants. You can't, and, and another big area that's really sad is, you know, we tried to get set up at one of the communities on Hickory Boulevard to do lunches, and we were shut down on that. They have no restaurants, so those people daily are trying to pull out into traffic on Hickory Boulevard to go get lunch. I mean, it's just, you know how bad it is. We have accidents almost every day there. So, Hickory Boulevard is an issue with the communities that can't serve lunch or afternoon dinner, whatever. And we lost a really good chance to make an impact there at one of the communities and were shut down. So, I just want to say, if a restaurant's got it together, they should welcome competition, and they shouldn't feel that any food truck is a threat to it, in-season or off-season, because it's all about the quality, the service that you give the patron. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. Thanks for being here. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Joanne Quattraro. I live in Valencia, Benita. I'm a brand-new member of the Benita Springs area.
And you're back for your second meeting?
Yeah, well, my very first meeting.
Oh, I thought you were here once before.
No, no, my first time, I just moved here in October. Spent three years, actually, looking for the community in Florida that I wanted to live. We went up and down each coast and specifically chose Benita Springs because I love the downtown, I love the people, and being on Benita Beach Road and out a little bit further east, Momentum was one of the places that we were really happy to see. So, I'm here in support of relooking at the ordinance to help them expand their business. From northeast Ohio, Cleveland area for Dave Cosmic Subs, we saw this happen in northeast Ohio, and what happened were the food trucks actually left, and they went to smaller communities. And the smaller communities are the ones that benefited from it, along with, I feel, the restaurants also. So, I just want to say thank you for looking into this, revisiting it, and I'm fully in support of expanding the ordinance to more food trucks. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, and welcome. Welcome to town. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Please come forward. Good morning, welcome.
My name is Samuel Steen. I am not a resident. I've been a resident, taught at USF in Tampa, worked in a medical rehab hospital in Bradenton, lived in Sarasota, so I've been going on the way down in Port Charlotte, in Fort Myers, and in Naples. And the only place in southwest Florida that my wife and I considered moving permanently, we, we travel a great deal. I've been consultant, worked for Charlotte County in, in fixing their special education, and I've been, for over the past 30 years, been in and out of southwest Florida. But Benita Springs is the only place I'm interested in settling. So, while Momentum is what brought this issue to my attention, to our attention, we've spoken with a number of folks that we've gotten to know in Village Walk where we are staying, and everyone's interested in this. Everyone has an axe to grind, everyone has, wants a taco, everybody wants something out of this, and my interest as a prospective resident, I think, because I represent potential, I think that's why, why I wanted to come, because you have people moving in all the time into this area. And honestly, ladies and gentlemen, what I'm looking at is not the food trucks and not the restaurants. I benefit from both, thank you very much, Momentum and food trucks and restaurant people, but also the area, the homes, the lovely environment. I have, I remember what it used to be like. I started coming down to Naples in 1979, and Benita was that place you came if you had nothing else to do. So, I, I do know how it's grown, and it's become, it's incredibly impressive, but what I'm really looking at is how you, ladies and gentlemen of the Council, Mr. Mayor, how you handle this balancing of all these very important interests. I, as a future voter, that's what I'm looking at, and I wish you the best of luck.
Great, thank you. Thank you for your thoughts. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Please come forward. Come on down. Welcome, Don. Good morning.
Don Kunsakowski. I live on Hickory Boulevard. I've been there since 1983, and my taxes aren't cheap. I just, I want to just go over what is existing right now in the code, just so that we want protected. When the code was adopted in 2013, we, several people from, throughout the city that are residents, that have residential property, whether it's in C1 commercial zones or within multifamily zones, it didn't matter what zones they lived in. If they lived, were residents of the city, they were concerned, and in 2013, ordinance number 1302 was considered minimum regulations for mobile food vendors and food stands. The mayor and council created these minimum regulations because their use can be disruptive to existing and future businesses, especially in the areas sensitive to redevelopment. In addition, the 2013 mayor and council recognized that they needed these minimum regulations to protect public health, safety, and welfare, minimize, minimize visual impacts to the public realm, and to mitigate fiscal impacts to standard restaurants and related businesses. In 9B, the mayor and council of 2013, at a minimum, required that the vendors had to meet all federal, state, and local statutes, regulations, laws, ordinances, rules, and codes, which include not abrogating existing deed restrictions. In 11, the mayor and council of 2013, at a minimum and unanimously required letters of no objections from any school, church, restaurant, or residence within... restaurant, or residence within 500 feet. And finally, the mayor and council of 2013, at a minimum, due to citizens' outcry from throughout the city, to protect the residences in neighborhoods of all districts, as carefully as they were protecting schools, churches, and commercial restaurants, the mayor and council unanimously adopted Section 4, 3065 Prohibitions D. Setbacks required that unless there's a letter of no objection, mobile food vehicles, carts, and food stands shall not be located closer than 500 feet from any school, church, restaurant, or any residentially-used properties. The residents' concerns have not changed since 2013. Please protect the existing protections that the resident taxpayers fought so hard to get included in the regulations of 2013, to protect everyone throughout the city, not just existing restaurants or existing businesses or the existing food carts. We're not against increasing the number. We just want to protect our residents from the use. And Hickory Boulevard has deed restrictions that there are no food stands allowed there, just so you know. And they also have restrictions, except for the north and south end of the islands, where there are restaurants already that's residential purposes only. And we're going to protect those. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Don. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Please come forward. Welcome. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for taking the time this morning to discuss this really important topic. My name is Rachel Freeze. I own a food truck called Roland Raw Bar. I've been operating in Bonita about four years with Momentum Brew House. And I just have a small thing to add in terms of the amount of charities that we have participated in and given money to, in addition to participating in many, many other community events. So, we have a lot more to give than just operating here and there for lunches. Our food truck has donated well into the thousands of dollars to local charities. And we've also helped support other breweries, support charities through participating through their events. So, I just wanted to add that small little tidbit that a lot of people don't consider when they think of food trucks. Thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you. Thanks for being here. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Jesse, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, Council, my fellow Benetians, Jesse Purdon, District 2, for the record. And I consider, I do consider myself somewhat of a food truck connoisseur, but more so a Bonita connoisseur. I've known every major issue we've gone through for the last five years. This is one that I knew was going to excite people. But, so, just know this, I didn't come to this lightly. As far as the food trucks go, I don't know that there needs to be a cap in the amount of trucks. The food trucks should be permitted. The duration of the permit should be a year, not six months. And they should absolutely be allowed in other areas of the city. We have 56,000 residents. It's ludicrous to cap the number of trucks at five. The market will determine the amount. We, as a government body, don't need to do that. The 2012 ordinance is outdated. The land development code needs to be revamped, revived, in its totality, to create a more business and citizen-friendly atmosphere. Bans moratoriums and saying no to everything should not be the default position as a city. It's time to allow freedom of food options and to let private dollars flow back into the city of Bonita Springs. Additionally, the skate park is a great idea. I think it can create a great sense of place. As the chairman of the Outreach Committee, I've had a number of people who've commented on that, and they think it would be great for the city. Assuming we can get the matched grants, I agree, and I think we should move forward with that. As far as the food trucks, we can do common sense regulations where they're not putting it up right on top of brick and mortar. But we've heard from many people, and most of the people that I've heard from are actually from Hunter's Ridge. Yes, there are people mad there. But that's not all of the people there. And we are growing. We are young. It gives people options. If you've ever been to the food truck park down in Naples, okay, that area was the armpit. You go down there for, the ongoing joke in Naples was the prostitutes and the drugs were down on Bay Shore. And now Bay Shore is the most revitalized area in Naples. The property values have gone up. There's food options from everything that you can think of. And people like to go out there, and they like to have options. They don't, they get sick of going to five or six restaurants. This gives us something that will be unique. This will be something that will keep us on track with our competing cities. And I really think it's what the citizens want. So, I really think we need to consider letting the free market do what the free market does. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here, Jesse. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Please come forward. I'll allow round two. Welcome.
Since no one else is in line.
Round three from the family.
Melanie Fiatto again. I just want to speak about Hickory Boulevard. The, my situation that I had, it was a private community. They pay huge taxes, sometimes more than the residents because the residents are usually homesteaded if they're year-round. So, my truck is a Mercedes-Benz Sprint. It's a van. And to pull in there, it's very tastefully done, quiet, no loud noises. To pull into that community and serve lunch every day from 11 to 2 would not disrupt any resident near there. The community that we were going to go into had a beach access on the left. To make it 500 feet is just ridiculous. It's, I mean, it's just, doesn't work. And I can understand that you want to protect Bonita Beach and the traffic flow and so on. But having to, these people that are on the beach and having to go out at each beach access and get food or drinks or whatever adds to our congestion with the traffic. So, if the situation is right, and the community can warrant it, that owns the land, one of these beachfront communities, and wants to serve their 200 to 300 patrons that come there daily, wouldn't it be a plus for us to have a food truck there to service the members of Bonita Springs that own homes in Bonita Springs and pay taxes as well? The beach, I can understand you don't want anything commercial on it. But to pull a truck into one of these communities, what harm does that do, really? And I'd really like you to look at that and think about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Round two, speed rounds. How we doing?
We're doing just fine. And I won't mention the community here that she's speaking of, but I know which one it is. And the deed restrictions and the root-of-title deed for those properties is residential purposes only. If they want to open that can of worms, that would be fine. And in addition, if they would like food trucks, they ought to put a food truck in their residential neighborhood in Astero, and let them buy their lunches before they come to their residential property on our island. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Don. Other members of the public that would like to speak? It's Guy Clark. Welcome. Kind of like Dick Clark of Bonita Springs.
But better, but better, but better. I didn't plan on speaking today. I hate public speaking, but I really felt that I had to say something. My name is Guy Clark. I'm the co-founder of Food Idea Group, which we produce Sizzle Restaurant Week from Cape Coral down to Marco Island. I work with over 100 restaurants. And we also own a marketing company that works with the food space. Not once has any of these restaurants ever said, "Oh, my, the food trucks are taking away my business." They really, actually, some of the restaurants want to have food trucks, as some of the food trucks want to have restaurants. In addition to that, I've also, I'm the co-founder of Bacon Fest Naples. I ran that for the first three years. I also helped produce the very first food truck event at Top Rocker Field, which brought over 20,000 people. So, from the perspective of food trucks and restaurants, they work together all the time. I mean, we work with them daily. And not once have they ever really fought. But what I've seen subsequently is when food trucks come in, when breweries come in, the engagement in the community, the engagement in the city increases. It brings jobs. It brings life to cities. It brings fun factor to the city. And regulations are great. We think they should be in place. I think they should be in place by all means. Nobody wants trash. Nobody wants tanks exploding, et cetera. So, regulation's good. But limiting is going to limit the growth, limit the fund, limit the expansion, limit people wanting to move into this town. I moved into Bonita from Naples because I thought it was better. I wanted a place that was more family and more fun. And I love going down, I don't drink a lot of beer, but I love going down to the brewery. And I love when the different food trucks are there. And I live in Village Walk, and we have food trucks come through all the time. And I love getting emails saying, "Which one's going to be there that week?" But I also love going to all the restaurants. There's Wild Cafe, et cetera, and all those other great places. So, they can co-mingle. But if you limit it, it's really going to have an effect on the city. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Guy, thanks for being here. Thanks for your great work.
Hi. Sorry. Mark again from.
Round two, speed round.
Yes, yes. There won't be a round three for me. Just a couple of things, too, I failed to mention earlier. Dave's Cosmic Subs is a restaurant chain. It's only 22 stores. 18 are actually in Ohio, and four, Seal Beach, California, Atlanta. We are its first food truck. So, ours was a test to market. I've never been at Momentum. I've been there as a patron. I've never served there. But I've been at Village Walk. I have been at Valencia. I support, as Rachel Freeze mentioned, a lot of charities. I've done Shy Wolf Sanctuary. I'm a member of Captains for Clean Water. We've given a lot back to a lot of donations, battered women, battered children, et cetera. I think the important thing is, as in, like Bay Shore, you know, I wasn't here, you know, when it was hookers and drugs. However, it has revitalized. I've done rotating at Celebration Park. It's a great concept. I think there should be more of those. It should just be regulated and controlled. As for investment, I pay sales tax. I'm a franchise. I have to go through. I got to report it to them, as well as all the cities. Our goal is to enforce standards and make sure it's good for everybody. And choice, because at the same time, I go to restaurants just like everybody else here. We just don't eat at food trucks. And from an investment standpoint, I spent over $100,000 on a storage unit over at Vehicle Fortress. I spent $160,000 on my truck. I'm probably one of the most expensive truck in the market here. We serve artisanal fresh baked bread daily. Show me how many restaurants are doing that. So, it's quality. And the last thing about community, I live in Corkscrew Shores over in Astero. So, I'm a neighbor. I don't reside here. We have a clubhouse. Well, guess who serves on Mondays once a month there? I do. Because it gives our own residents a choice to come there when the actual restaurants shut down. So, the whole point is, I think, variety is a good thing, and I think it'll benefit everybody in the community, both city council, residents, and restaurateurs. Thank you.
Thank you for your thoughts. Other members of the public? Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Thank you for having this meeting. I'm Sherri Curry with Curry's Smoking Hot Barbecue. My husband and I own and operate the business. And I agree with everything that's been said here today. But I wanted to reiterate just one fact, that when you own a food truck or food vending business, there are lots and lots of regulations and licensing that we have to go through. We spend thousands of dollars creating our business, following the rules, getting our health inspections. We get health inspected, if not the same amount more than the actual brick and mortar restaurants do. We have to have commercial kitchens to dump our wastewater and to get rid of our grease. I don't want people having the myth that we just dump water wherever we want to dump it. We'd have, dump our grease wherever we want to dump it. It's not. We have strict regulations that we have to file, and we have to follow them, or we get shut down. So, just like a brick and mortar would. So, just, I'm here to support the breweries and the locations that we are allowed in now. And I ask that you truly consider looking through all these things. And I appreciate the time.
I suppose you were all parking in the post office parking lot. So, would you assume?
Thank you. Ma'am, would you like to speak? Otherwise, please take it outside. Thank you. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Please come forward, ma'am, if you'd like. Other members of the public that would like to speak?
She.
Yes. All right. Last call. I'm giving last call. Anybody that would like to speak, please come forward at this time. Otherwise, we're going to shut it down. Okay. Welcome.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up again because I think the last gal was, what she had to say was extremely important, and I'm sorry I didn't touch upon it. We are definitely under all full regulations. We had to have our fire suppression inspected from the fire department, Bonita Springs Fire Department, state regulations, state licensing. So, we were fully having to fill out every level along the line and meet those requirements. So, it's very important to know that the state is on us and right down the line from the health department to the fire inspection. And it has to be done regularly. So, those are key issues for us.
Great. Thank you. Mike, welcome.
Mayor, good morning. Council, good morning. I'm not here to talk about food trucks. On the consent agenda, I would request respectfully that the council pull for discussion items C and H. I represent, with respect to item C, as it relates to the Bonita Beach Road visioning and quadrant, in the status comments, it appears that the city's in negotiations with the Northwest Quadrant property owner as it relates to FDOT in some study that's been commissioned. I represent the property of the Northwest Quadrant, a couple of different ones, northwest and southeast, and, excuse me, northeast, southeast of that quadrant. I would just ask council to make sure that staff keeps us in the loop. Usually, those improvements, the interconnectivity, the roadways are not isolated. Everything's got to flow together. And I just respectfully request that we get kept in the loop, our engineers, et cetera, and that we can update our plans as it happens. And then, with respect to item H, this is the Spring Creek Restoration Plan. It appears some monies are starting to be spent from the $110,000 that was budgeted. I represent the landowners at Burnwood Business Park, as well as some building owners in that park that are downstream. And we had a considerable amount of land that was taken away from us when DEP redrew the floodplain, floodway area in there. I don't know how far along you are. It doesn't appear that because there's some significant dollars that have been spent. But I'd also respect the request that our engineers be kept in the loop as the data comes through on how the water's going to be improved and what that will do to affect the drainage to the west. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thanks for being here. Anybody else that would like to speak? On any agenda item? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Council, what's your pleasure?
I and K, just for discussion.
I'm sorry. And yes?
I and K for discussion. And I don't know, should we still pull, do we want to talk more about C and K, H, or did he already give us what he was interested in?
I and K, and then we'll pull.
Want Mowers to.
Right, right. C and H.
For discussion.
Okay. Motion to approve the rest?
We could approve I and K. I just want to talk about it.
Sure. Absolutely.
So, we include it in the consent.
Okay. There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And just to be clear, we are going to pull C, H, I, and K. Okay? There's been a motion in a second to approve the rest. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
And before we start, if you are parked in the post office, I guess apparently you may be towed. So, I apologize for that inconvenience. I know there's not enough spots here. Any recommendations on where these folks can park? Across the street, probably. Probably across the street, folks. And I'm sorry to have to ask you to do that. But we look forward to having you come back. Thank you. I'm sorry about that. Amy, please.
Do you want me to talk about, well, I'll talk about C and H. I think.
Yes.
The suggestions that Mr. Mauer gave are reasonable, and.
Folks, let's please keep it, Amy, I'm sorry. Let's keep it down, folks, please.
I think we should follow up on his suggestion. And it is clear, I think, in both the cases that he brought up, that we're just in sort of the planning stages. So, we're not close to making any decisions. But once we get some designs in place, we should have some more information. And that's a very reasonable suggestion. So, I'm in favor of that.
No. And if I can give a verbal email, I know generally we like an email, a physical email to create a public record. But if we could make sure whatever information we have, Mr. Mauer receives that. Thank you. A verbal public record request. There we go.
That's pretty good.
Will that work? Okay.
Well, let me see what I said about, I forgot. Oh, I just was wondering about the I, where there's a donation of the land, and it said in that, I wasn't, it wasn't clear that we were exchanging that for some consideration of $40,000. Did that include all the transfer? I didn't understand what the $40,000 was for. I guess that's my question.
So, originally, when we worked with Partnership for Housing, they had some addition. So originally, when we worked with Partnership for Housing, they had some additional costs. Their project took quite longer than expected.
I remember that.
And so several, maybe two years or so ago, they had asked for a consideration, if the council would be willing, to provide an additional $40,000 towards the project out of CDBG funds. At that time, the council made the motion not to give the $40,000 for-- out of the CDBG funds, but to provide it for the land donation of the additional land that they had. So we are exchanging $40,000 for--
But in the green sheet, you also said that there were some transfer costs, like $20,000? Is that in addition to the $40,000, or is that included?
Yes, that's in addition--
Oh, so it's $40,000 plus all those-- Okay.
Correct, because during that time, we said that we would not-- that the Partnership for Housing would be made whole in the transfer.
Okay, okay, that's fine. So did we vote on that or not? If we didn't, I move to accept that.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion to accept in a second. Is there further discussion, council? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye. And then I just wanna make a comment on K, and to thank the people who have-- this is, we have three, or five candidates that are coming forward to run in District Two and Four. I appreciate the effort by these candidates. It's not easy to be in these positions, and it's not easy to run. So those volunteers, I think, should be commended, no matter what the outcome. Two of you are gonna win, and the rest of you maybe will come back another time we do it. But thank you for coming forward, and I just move to accept those qualified candidates for the election.
There's been a motion to accept the qualified candidates in a second. And Amy, before we vote, I would just like to add as well, as somebody that's run in two elections and wasn't supposed to win either time, because it wasn't my turn, I applaud every one of your efforts and wish you all the very best of luck. There's been a motion to approve in a second. Is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Great, thank you. And honestly, I have lost track. Do we need to approve-- is it C, or did we approve C?
C and H are still--
C and H are still kinda hanging? All right, motion to approve C and H? Okay, there's been a motion in a second for C and H. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye. Okay, great. Council, any other comments on any of the consent items? Okay, we're gonna move on to proclamations and presentations. Item A is a certificate of recognition to Dallas, i.e. Houston, Reboard, as I call him, for his service on the City of Benita Springs Historic Preservation Board. If you could please come forward at this time. Good morning, welcome. Nice to see you. On behalf of the City of Benita Springs, this is a certificate of appreciation presented to Dallas Reboard. I'm not saying that right. That's not coming out right. It's Reboard? Okay, you know your name, but it's not sounding right to me, Dallas. But thank you very much for everything you do. In recognition of your 10 years of dedicated service to the City of Benita Springs Historic Preservation Board, your commitment to the preservation of our history and culture have made a lasting contribution that citizens and visitors will enjoy for generations to come, 2009 to 2019. Signed, Mayor Peter Simmons, January 15, 2020. Thank you. I'm gonna miss you, but as I told you at a meeting a week or so ago, I know how to get ahold of you, and I know you'll still take the call. So thank you so very much for everything you've done.
It's been a pleasure. It's been my pleasure working with all of the staff and the council. Thank you for your support for the historic preservation of Benita Springs. Keep up the good work.
Great. Dallas, thank you. Honestly, thank you.
Picture.
Do you wanna do a photo? That's all right? If it's not, that's fine too.
One, two.
Yeah, great, thank you. Dallas, thank you very much. Okay. And if members of the Bridge Fund could please come forward.
Mayor, behind you.
Thank you. Welcome. Hello, how are you?
Good, thanks.
Nice to see you. Welcome, welcome. Welcome. Hi, how are you? Welcome. Great. This is a proclamation on behalf of the City of Benita Springs for the Bridge Fund. Whereas the Bridge Fund is a local 501(c)(3) nonprofit, tax-exempt charity founded in 2012 by a small group of Pelican Landing residents who were concerned that some of our quote-unquote neighbors were experiencing short-term financial crisis with no place to turn. And whereas the Bridge Fund's stated mission is to help the gaps that exist in our greater Benita Springs, Astero communities, support systems by helping people experiencing-- experiencing, excuse me, personal crisis, and by supporting public education needs. And whereas the Bridge Fund works in a unique collaboration with a network of over 40 charity and school partners to identify and quickly respond to short-term, immediate financial crisis in the Benita Springs, Astero communities. And whereas the Bridge Fund is run entirely by a group of dedicated volunteers residing in Pelican Landing, helping to keep administration expenses below 2%, allowing over 98% of contributions to go directly to those in need. And whereas the Bridge Fund is funded almost entirely by personal donations from residents and run entirely by volunteers. And whereas the Bridge Fund, since its founding, has approved over 1,200 awards totaling over $1 million, and benefiting more than 400 families and thousands of individuals in Benita Springs, surrounding communities, and area schools. Now therefore I, Peter Simmons, Mayor of the City of Benita Springs, do hereby commend the Bridge Fund for its seven years of service to our community. Signed, Mayor Peter Simmons, January 15, 2020. Congratulations. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, Mayor, thank you for being able to read this so well.
And my eyes are getting worse as you can count.
You did a wonderful job.
And my tongue, and my tongue and my eyes don't work like they used to.
We are just very pleased to be able to do what we're doing with a lot of the social service agencies here in Benita Springs, Astero, and throughout Lee County. And we appreciate very much this proclamation. Could we have a picture taken of us all together up here?
Absolutely, please. Yes, would you like to hold this? Would you like to say a few words? No?
These are board members, board members of the Bridge Fund.
I wanna hear from you. Or I guess I'll hold this.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Amazing work.
Thank you for what you do. Thank you so very much. Thank you. Okay. Alrighty, we're gonna move on now to item C, which is a presentation by the United States Census Bureau on the 2020 census. And this is green sheet 20-01015. Welcome, thanks for being with us.
Thank you very much for giving me some time this morning to speak about the census. Tremendous.
And I apologize, but maybe a little bit louder or closer to the microphone, I'm sorry.
Does it move?
Is it?
Okay.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you. My name's Michelle Mallsberry, and I'm with the U.S. Census Bureau. I cover Collier, Lee, and Charlotte Counties. Do you hear me okay?
That's, the closer you get, the better it is in a--
Okay, I'll stay in.
No, I, thank you.
Okay. To the next one. The next thing is, the goal of the census is to count everybody once, only once, and in the right place. Now, we have a tremendous undertaking to count everybody across the United States. And the dicennial census only occurs every 10 years, so it's tremendously important to all of your communities. The first census was taken in 1790, and it took them two years to do. You might think over time we'd become more proficient. However, we started working on the 2020 census back in 2013, and will actually wrap up in 2021. The census, because it occurs-- the dicennial census, because it occurs only every 10 years, is very, very important for all of the communities across the United States, because it sets the pace of funding for the next decade. I've heard some very interesting things today here in your community, from your skateboard park to your food trucks, to the bridges and greenways and stuff like that that may be able to be funded if we can just get a great count. In 2000, Lee County had a 68% participation rate. In 2010, it was only up to 72%. That still leaves 28% of the funding on the table. That's a tremendous amount of money when you equate it to how fast your community has grown over the last decade. And what I've heard today is Benita Springs has, was it 56,000 people? And I'm sure in the last count, you had far fewer than that. So it equates to money for healthcare, education, infrastructure, disaster relief. I'm sure you were impacted in Hurricane Irma, as were most of the other communities along the coast here. And as I drive around and speak to other communities, I notice that there are still roofs that are still being replaced. It's nearly three years later. And I think a lot of that is because the count hasn't been entirely correct. So what we need to do is band together and try to ensure that your community gets everybody counted. And that's gonna take a collective effort of everyone. Most of the other communities are forming, and I think you're probably aware of the Lee County Complete Count Committee. And I don't know if you're gonna participate in that or do your own. City of Astero, or Village of Astero, is doing their own complete count committee. Lehigh Acres, because they've been traditionally difficult to count, has their own complete count committee. City of Fort Myers is doing their own complete count committee. And Coral Springs is joining with the county. Just so you're all up to date and on the same page. Anyway, it equates to billions of dollars. It's $675 billion across the United States every single year. Many of those funds can be trickled down into your communities if we just get a really good count. This is just some more information that it helps to forecast the future of transportation. Also, the Census Bureau exists only to compile statistics. And so our statistics are used by businesses if they wanna decide to come into your community for education, it's for the SNAP programs, early education. Pretty much any part of your life is touched by the count. Important things for the community to know is that it's entirely confidential, and we never share any of the information we collect with any other agency. And the first postcards will actually go out in mid-March. I think March 12th is the day, even though actual census day is April the 1st, there'll be a series of four postcards that will go out. The first one in March, then April, then May, and then June. And for the first time, what we're trying to do is in between all of that, we're going to be tallying all these things in real time. All the postcards will have-- they have a little geocode in the bottom of the postcard. They actually go to every single residence. And so if they get things in their P.O. box, it's important that perhaps those communities-- I mean, a little mailbox in their community, not a P.O. box, okay? Because it won't go to a P.O. box. It actually goes to a real address. So it's important that the people realize that this is coming from the census. It's 10 simple questions, I believe I've sent them to you and to Matt as well, right? That they realize the importance of doing this. They can do it also for the first time over the phone, or they-- and we have 12 different language specialists. If people have language deficiencies and need assistance, they can also do it on the computers. All of the libraries in every county, in ID3 counties, are all making their computers available for people who might not have computers at home. So people can go in there, and it's free. They have to be a member, but they can go fill out their censuses on the computer as well. We will also have people in between that who'll be going door-to-door, since we're tabulating those in real time. And they can fill the census out when those people come to their door. Okay? There are, of course, wherever there's opportunity, there's also scams. We have had, from time to time, a complaint about people pretending to be census workers. At this time, there should be nobody out in the neighborhoods. Earlier on in the year, we had people doing enumeration. They were just out there, walking around with little handheld computers and checking off that, yes, somebody could live in that house, or that apartment building, or whatever. Some of the things that Astero is doing is they have a committee of just all of their homeowners' associations. And so because Florida also has snowbirds and people who just come, you know, down here, maybe not for the entire snowbird season, but because there's an influx of people back and forth, it's a little bit different animal than maybe some communities in other states may have. And the state has also just appointed a person. I don't know if you guys got the email. Previously, they had kinda been kinda hands-off with the census. And they actually appointed a person who's going to be a liaison for the state. So I think we're also gonna get a little healthy competition, county for county, maybe city for city. But certainly, the more work we do that helps to raise the bar for all of your communities, the better off we'll all be. Let me just backtrack. We'll never ask for any of this information. When I was talking about nefarious people, perhaps posing as census people, if people are complaining, tell them to call the police. They won't be out anywhere until mid-March. We're also doing a big recruiting thing. And I've already been over that one, so I won't go again. And I have Mike Donlin here, who's one of our recruiters. If he could just have a moment to just talk about, we're looking for 7,000 people, basically, in Lee County. And it's part-time, temporary jobs.
Great, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Mike Donlin. I've been recruiting since last January. We're in our 13th month. We need to be done by the end of February. Benita Springs is the worst area in Lee County. We're at 44% of where we need to be, of people signing up to work for $15.50 an hour to count the people in Benita. If we count less than 80% like we did 10 years ago, you're gonna lose over $20 million per month for the 56,000 people-- I mean, per year for the 10 years. You're gonna lose over $200 million because the people aren't counted. We will bring people in from outside of Benita to attempt to count the people in Benita Springs, but they won't be able to do as good a job as if we had people in Benita Springs signing up to work for $15.50 an hour to count the people in there. And we're not just talking gated communities, but we need people in the gated communities to count the people within their community. We need people outside of the gated communities to be counting everybody that lives in Benita Springs. And we're at 44%, and we've got six weeks to go. And we're in-- we need a lot of support from your leadership. We need the complete count groups like we've got in Astero, and Fort Myers, and Cape Coral, and Lehigh. We just need a lot to get done in the next month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from any of you?
I had a question. You'd said everything's mailed to a physical address?
Yes.
Which makes sense. I mean--
Right.
But let's say somebody has a P.O. box and does not accept mail at their house. Does the U.S. Postal Service kind of override that, so to speak? You know what I'm saying? If they don't accept mail at their house, but you're saying you wanna deliver it to their house, not their legal mailing address, how's that work?
Yes, nothing will be delivered to a P.O. box. Everything will only go to a physical address, because it's the only way we can monitor it and not have multiple people, you know, coming in. The geocode on the bottom of the card is especially coded for every single address. And that's how we know that there's only been one response from every household. And that just keeps everybody honest.
But how is it delivered to the home?
Well, almost all homes still will have a mailbox, even if they only get their kind of junk mail there. And that's where I really need all of your assistance, to tell people to look in there and to just pick that one little post-- and to just pick that one little postcard out if they will. Because there won't be mailed any, there won't be, the questionnaire is not going to be mailed except until maybe, I think, the third postcard comes out. And at that point, they can actually mail it back in. But otherwise, we're counting on them to actually call in or go online and fill it out. I believe they can also request a written form if they need. And we have it in Spanish and we have it in, excuse me, Creole, Haitian, and in English so far.
And you said you're still in search of people to work?
Oh, very much.
In Benita Springs for these positions. How many folks do you currently have in Benita Springs and how many do you need?
Our goal for the south part of the county, which would be Estero and Benita, is we need 1,500 people. Right now, we're at 44%. So I guess we need another 900, eight or 900 people signed up to actually, when, if he doesn't return his form, I have to go and knock on his door politely three times and hopefully he'll come to the door and we'll take care of it then. But obviously, it's a lot-
He's stubborn, so keep working on him.
Yeah, okay. But anyway.
No, but like a gated community or where, you know, folks aren't allowed to walk around and knock on doors, how do you handle that?
It's very simple. It's part of the Department of Commerce. We cannot be stopped from going within a gated community. If Michelle is the person for this, Benita Bay, she goes to the gate, she's going to have identification and stuff. If the guard says, no, you can't come in, well, then she'll go to her supervisor and the wrath of the government will come down upon Benita Bay and say, you will let people in. If you don't have people that agreed to count inside, we'll bring people in from Fort Myers or Cape Coral to do it for you.
Sure. And I, just a question, I mean, I guess that seems like a really large number of people that you need. What is it that these folks would be doing exactly? Going door-to-door to verify information or?
Going to his door, knocking three times. If he doesn't come, we have to go back twice more. If he doesn't come three times at three different times, at three different days, then we have to record that, that basically, it's a non-response. And that's, you know, that's the $20,000 you don't get for the next 10 years because we couldn't get a hold of him.
Right.
Well, actually, I mean, actually, I mean, if there's four people living in that house, if you have a spouse and two children or a partner and two children, that's $80,000 that doesn't come back to Benita Springs area over the next 10 years.
Sure.
It's a way to pick on you.
No, absolutely. Fred?
When you send you mail to every house, if they don't have a mailbox, what happens?
Well, in what instance would they not have a mailbox?
I know a few people that don't have mailboxes.
Really? Well, I don't think we can put it at their door, although I'm unsure about that. I'll find out and get back to you. But in the big gated communities, I'll let you know that Estero with their homeowners' association, they meet once a month. And what we did specifically with them is they're going to send out ticklers, like they all have an email list of all their residents. And so they're going to send out little ticklers that say, hey, the census is occurring here and make sure you fill out your, you know, your postcard. Either you call in or go online and do that. And they're going to sort of help us police their communities.
For like, for like the condos, if there's not addresses to be mailed to, somebody will actually go and deliver and put at each door the nine to 10 questions for the person to respond to. The government knows where all the homes, if you are, located with or without post office boxes. If he doesn't have mail delivered, that's automatically, somebody's got to come to his house three times or your house, so.
Maybe that's a better reply for them, mail. Anybody else?
Mike? Laura? Amy?
These people that have already volunteered, do you have locational information on them? Like, for example, if only, you're just inferring that 45% are not, are below in Benita Springs, right?
Oh, that's just their statistics for recruiting.
One thing good, one thing good they've done is they've defined the whole country in the individual tracks of about 3,000 people per track, I believe. So like, Benita Bay development might be two tracks. I don't know how big it is. I can go right there now and I can tell you real time how many people have signed up to work in Track 123 in Benita Bay and in Track 245 in Benita Bay.
That leads to my next question. Can you provide the city with the tracks that are uncovered so that perhaps we-
Exactly. Oh, my gosh, yes.
Okay, that's the question.
Can you do that today?
I could do it, you know, right, yeah.
I recommend that you do that because we have, we have an internal contacting system that I think is, has pretty good coverage with the entire city that is supposed to be connected to the neighborhoods. That should correlate with those track numbers. And perhaps we can get a messaging system out through that and target the census units that are not being covered. I think that would be a good step in there because it seems to me that the problem that you're addressing is one of personnel. And frankly, we don't want people to go be knocking on doors. We want them to respond to the postcards. We want them to call. We want them to use the internet and all those kinds of things. So we need some public information that alerts people to the fact that the, that the postcards are coming and that they should pay attention to them and say, call, don't wait for someone to knock on your door. I mean, that kind of message. And I think that messaging will probably come out of Lee County because don't they have assist, don't they have a-
They do. They've, all of the cities and including, including Estero, participating in the complete count for Lee County. Then they're doing some, some communities are doing some additional aims, but all of the cities have representation by Lee County, including Lee Health. I understand major employers are all there. So all, they're trying to gain all access. And actually, city staff, Courtney and Ellie, have been participating with Lee County since 2019 on exactly what you were discussing, making sure the government knows where all of our housing units are. So there is a census track and a census block, and those units are mapped out. So they know where the unit is. They know where the physical address is, if they don't have a mailbox or such, they know that a unit is there and that's a household there. And we've been participating in those map revisions and looking at how those, how those census blocks will work for counting. But yes, the information we would be looking for so that we have a complete, consistent message with Southwest Florida is the, is having Lee County give, take the lead on creating the information for us to get out. And then we can utilize our email blasts, our other forms of communication, our website, the neighborhood link list that we have, Facebook, and our other social media as well.
No, I'm sorry, Amy, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, just as an example, I live in a gated community, Pelican Landing, and, you know, I think we could activate there pretty easily if we know what we're supposed to be doing. I don't think that's a problem. And I, and we have, it's both a curse and a benefit that we have so many gated communities within Benita Springs because if you have that organization, you just have to contact, like, the managers or anybody that lives there, and then somebody will get the ball rolling and you're, and you're running. I think the problem is where there are no organizations like that from neighborhoods, and there are some like that, but they tend to be small in number. I think a lot of them, we do have neighborhood association organizations, and so that's, I think we're fortunate here. We should, we should be able to do better. But I can understand why people wouldn't want to go door-to-door. I mean, it's not, you know, it's not something that I think most people who are here, certainly during season, want to do. They want to go to the beach, so.
Going door-to-doors is liberating, Amy, remember?
Oh, yeah. Unless you're campaigning, it's not, it's not even fun when you're campaigning. All you people that are signed up for District 2 and 4, get ready. Maybe you could be a census worker, but I guess you can't, you can't, you can't mix your politics with the census, but.
I don't know if you have your own water billing system, utility billing system, but what the City of Fort Myers did this past month is when they sent out the-
The bills.
The water bill, they had an insert about getting everybody to, number one, respond to the census, and number two, oh, by the way, we're hiring people for $15.50 an hour.
We have a private utility system, which we could certainly ask them if they would be interested in doing that as a public service. That wouldn't be hard to do.
Yes.
If we can do that, and I'm happy to call or meet or whatever.
Any other events that you might have? We've been present at quite a few events across Lee County. I know in Lehigh Acres, they're also holding block party. They're going to do one on March 14th in some areas, especially because they're hard to count. But just have a block party and have some people with computers, like Goodwill in Collier County has a bus with four computers in it. And so they're mobile. I don't know if your Goodwill here does, but if they do, and I've spoken to Lehigh about doing that too, for some of the communities that might not have computers, you know, certainly everybody has a cell phone and that's easy enough to do. But just think kind of of creative things to get the word out about the census so everybody wants to participate.
Well, I would just make a personal request that you, and I know you will, but please kind of keep us in real time. Because I think what it does is it'll motivate everybody up here. People like to see results. Oh, good, we got so-and-so, but so, you know, whatever the case may be, please keep us in the loop because we want our citizens counted.
Oh, definitely you do. And will you have a representative that will be coming to the Lee County meeting this coming week? Okay, excellent.
The 23rd, yes.
Yes, okay, excellent.
Do I have the card of the recruiter?
Absolutely. He's got a table in the back, Fred.
And I'm going to leave a bunch of cards back there. If anybody here wants to sign up to work for $15.50 an hour, the cards will be back there.
That's more that we get paid.
And you're helping the city get money.
Absolutely.
Help keep our taxes down.
Right.
I'm going to do it.
But we get benefits.
If I call you after our meeting, I could get you someplace today around 3 o'clock.
Cool.
Just you.
That would be excellent.
Great.
Any other questions?
Counsel, anything else?
No, we might tie them-
Staff team?
We could have them at one of our events, look at the timing of our events, and they could have a booth there or something like that.
We're doing that everywhere. That would be awesome.
Things that we could tie, we could tie you into.
Okay. I know, are you guys having MLK Day parade or anything?
I'm sorry, no.
Not a parade, no.
Okay. Or any other celebration? Because I know we are in Naples, they are in City of Fort Myers, stuff like that. And so we're all having a table in all of those locations.
We can reach out to provide you a list of the city's special events.
Okay. That would be awesome.
With our staff.
Okay. Yes, if you'll send those to me, then I'll request Mike or someone, and we'll have someone there. Thank you so much.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Great presentation, great information. And I would just encourage everybody to, citizens of Benita Springs, to participate. It's very, very important. Obviously, to be counted for representation, for money, for so many things. And, you know, it's just kind of spitballing because we won't know for a few years. But with the number of people that come into Florida each and every year, each and every day, we, the state of Florida is poised to gain two more congressional seats. As you know, there's a finite number of 435, and they split that. Every state gets one, but then the largest remainder keeps going. And Florida's in line to get two more seats in Congress, so this is very critical. Yes, Amy, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, point of privilege is that, can we turn up that microphone at all? I don't know if it was just the quiet voice of the previous speaker, but many times, we, I cannot hear that speaker. Yeah. And sometimes I can't hear Arlene either. I think it needs some adjustment. John, we probably hear, maybe we should turn his down.
I'll do my best.
Okay, no, you're good.
I think it may have been.
Yeah, but still, it's-
I know, I know, it's not easy.
And Arlene is, it must be the lower-range voices.
John? Okay, we're going to move on now. Thank you for that discussion. Item D, which a lot of folks are here for today, is a discussion of the city's regulation on mobile food vendors and people that want to follow on, along. This is Green Sheet 20-01-014. John Domer?
Morning.
Morning.
As you remember, the last time we talked about this issue, I said I would come back to you and we would talk about kind of how we got here with this ordinance and also some surrounding jurisdictions and their regulations for food trucks. Back in 2012, we started this discussion and it was a result of several trucks, carts, mobile vending coming up across the city. And at the time, the council wanted to address this and to provide some regulations. Now, if you remember, 2012 was not the best of economic times, and a lot of the local businesses downtown were also struggling like most of us were. And so the council was looking to protect brick-and-mortar investment. They were also looking to, to protect what they were looking at as the unknown when it came to mobile vending because the city was in the middle of spending a lot of their own money making improvements down there and wasn't sure exactly what to expect. So as a result, we came up with the ordinance. I hand it out to you because I knew that you would not be able to read it on the screen. It's the paper-clipped handout. The first ordinance that's on there is for Benita Springs. And that is what we are enforcing today. Essentially, it has restrictions of misconduct outlined during public comment in terms of where you cannot go or need to have a letter of no objection. But it also limits the number of food trucks within the city to five. Currently, one of those permits and one of those that was originally issued with the ordinance is an old 41, and it was a piece of property that had been developed with parking, dumpsters, and some other infrastructure put in place. And the council recognized that investment and allowed that food truck to stay there for a period of eight years. That eight-year period will expire sometime in 2021, and so they are valid until that time. The other four permits are associated with food trucks that are at the address for Momentum Brew House. And discussion on how those have shuffled in and out is kind of why we're here today. So if you want to look back, I provided a synopsis of, if I pulled the wrong green sheet, of other regulations behind your green sheet.
John, can I just ask you a question, please?
Ma'am.
This thing that you handed out, how does it relate to what came out in the green sheet? Is it duplicate?
Somewhat, but a little bit more detail on some of the other jurisdictions. I wanted to make sure you had it, that's why.
But is this the code?
This came out of the, your municipal code corporation.
And what is this thing that came out in the green sheet?
That's the ordinance itself. So there are different forms in the fact that one you see is the ordinance that was passed, an ordinance form. The other one is in the formatted form from the-
All right, but the details should be the same?
Yes, ma'am. Regulations should be the same.
Unless you've updated it incorrectly.
Correct.
If I reviewed the thing in the green sheet. Okay, thank you.
So, four. Keep this going. These are your current regulations. Like I said, I knew that this would be very difficult to read. There are some additional copies of those regulations in the back of the room that I provided if anybody wants to follow along. And these are the other jurisdictions we looked at. I have also reached out to the Village of Estero. Unfortunately, we've been playing phone tags, so I don't have their specific regulations right now, but they were supposed to be part of this list. And if I receive information from them in the near future, I'll provide it to you. The City of Fort Myers probably has what I'll call the most lenient regulations. They do not limit the number of vehicles or trucks. What they do is they limit the zoning districts in which they can be located. They also state there needs to be a separation between existing food trucks. And they also state that you cannot block parking right-of-way driveways or access or essentially be a nuisance to the walking or driving public. Collier County is very similar. They break their food truck permits into three different groups from what I can tell. The first group is basically the mobile trucks that go from site to site, like an ice cream truck. They don't stay in one particular location very long. They stay there long enough to vent for a few minutes and then they move to the next location. The second is more of a food truck that we were discussing today, and that is allowed to be there for a period of, I believe, 14 straight days or 28 days in the course of a year. And you can stay there during hours of operation, and at night, the vehicle needs to be removed and they would show back up again the next morning. The third is more of a food truck park. And that food truck park is what we've talked about with Celebration Park. Essentially, what they're looking at is, and I've talked to a couple of you about this, it's permitting an outdoor restaurant because multiple food trucks are going to be located in one place. You're going to have them hooked up to more of a central infrastructure system. It's going to be parking provided. There may or may not be alcohol involved, and there may be landscaping involved. The City of Naples does not permit mobile vendors, so that was rather simple.
They don't?
They have said, we do not permit them, and they are not allowed, according to their planning department. I contacted them because I was trying to remember if facial was in the city or the county. I could not remember at first. It is in the county.
Well, that was my question. They're in the Collier County?
Yes, ma'am, unincorporated. Yes, ma'am. So, today, uh, I think that the topics of discussion should generally include, where do we permit vehicles? Are the number of food truck permits adequate today, or do we need to modify that number? And is the council interested in looking at regulations to permit food truck parks? Currently, there is not a path forward for those. There is not specific regulations, there are not specific conditions. There really is not even a defined term in your land development code for such a thing. So, if you wish to have that, I would recommend that we come up with some regulations that would address that, so that way, uh, those that apply know exactly what to expect, and the city knows what to expect from anybody that applies. We are not addressing today special event type permits. So, if someone has, uh, food trucks associated with another event, these are covered under a separate section of your ordinances. We are also not addressing live entertainment. Uh, it is not, the food trucks are not bringing with them bands or DJs. That is a separate requirement. Noise ordinance is still full effect, and if somebody wants a deviation from that, there's a process to do that. Um, and we're not deviating from the sound ordinance, just like I said. So, uh, to start this off, I know there's been a lot of talk about two things during public comment. One was the number of trucks that we permit, and two was the locations in which we permit them. There seems to be, and I don't want to speak out of turn, but there seems to be, uh, consensus in the fact that most of those that spoke wanted, uh, more locations. There was not a real concern about the number of trucks, but there was concern about where those trucks could go. And there were speakers that were on both sides of the fence for Hickory and for Old Forty-One. Both of those areas, under your current regulations, do not permit food trucks. It would only be if you took active amendments to your land development code that you could have a food truck in those areas. There has also been discussions about how a single location, uh, could provide consistent food truck vending operations on their site, and that would require, uh, you to allow for more food truck permits. I'm ready to kind of go whatever direction this council wants to go, as long as you can provide me a little bit of direction in terms of what you're thinking or what your initial thoughts are, we can start getting this conversation going.
No, and I'll, um, I'll kick it off, John. Thank you for that information. Um, and I, and you, you hit one, my first point. I mean, it's hard, as hard as it is for some people to separate the Super Bowl and the New England Patriots, times are changing, they're gonna have to. As hard as it's, um, for some people to separate music and noise from food trucks, separate issues, completely separate issues. Certainly do not want the Wild West, but certainly don't want to, um, look at a new business that's not necessarily new, but it's evolving, like everything in life, it's evolving. When you look at where we were in two thousand twelve, and that's when I was a rookie, I was brand new, I was sitting in the seat Councilman Gibson's in right now, uh, I remember this, there were a lot of unknowns, there were a lot of, I think, unfounded fears, but at the end of the day, there are rules and regulations to abide by. The folks that I've heard from here today, they want rules and regulations, but they don't want to be limited or burdened in a way that's not gonna be inviting. Um, I hear from several people, and I'll just look, I'm not looking at anybody, I'll look at myself when I say this, that Benita Springs is hard to do business in, found or unfounded, I hear it all the time. That is not any, uh, statement that I want to accept lightly. It's a hard pill to swallow, but I'll swallow it and I'll take it, that it's hard to do business here. Okay. Well, how are we working with people that want to do business here in Benita Springs? Uh, you had mentioned at one point, you and I had a discussion, that we're, we allow a total of five right now. So, literally, we're allowing one truck per, uh, five thousand five hundred people, based on our full-time population as opposed to our seasonal population. Um, so I would want to look at that number a, as a whole. You and I had kicked around the idea of rather than five permits total, perhaps a way to start, and my mind is wide open, as five locations that are able to operate twenty-four-seven, so to speak, seven days, not twenty-four-seven, but seven days a week. Um, I feel, and there's strong feelings on both sides of this, I feel disagreement is good, you've heard me say it before, because the end results end up in a stronger product, and, um, change is good. We don't want to be, Benita Springs has never been the same old, same old place to live. You've heard, we were the doormat of the county forever, the redheaded stepchild, if you will, but now, we're a hip, cool, nice, vibrant place to be, with a lot more going on. So with that comes changing your thinking, nothing against brick and mortar, nothing at all. It's the backbone of our society. But there's another segment here that can add and is adding to our economy. It's providing a need. Not everybody has time to wait an hour to go get a bite to eat and/or then spend another hour to eating. Uh, some folks do, and it's wonderful, but people on the go, younger people, people that are working, they need to get a quick bite to eat and move along. Um, so like I said, I don't, don't mishear me for one second. I do not want the Wild West. I want strict rules, I want strict regulations, and I want a very rigid structure. And at the end of the day, everybody will respond in a positive manner to that, but where there's ambiguity, where there's disagreements, and where there's gray area, that's gonna cause a problem, and I look forward to the discussion to avoiding any gray area whatsoever. Fred?
I'm just gonna, when you get, I would like to give you a couple of options.
Can you hear you?
Yep, speak up, Fred.
Okay. Clearly, we need to increase the number if we go that way. Another option, which, uh, John Domer presented to me yesterday, was that we could go site-specific. You get a site-specific, and then you can have food carts coming in every day of the week, and you could, you could either license or unlicense, as long as they had a health certificate. So that's a, an approach. I could go with either one of those. I, I, I will say one thing, I think they have to be, in a way, on a, on some kind of a site that's not gonna impede traffic, and I would say in Hickory Island, that's gonna be a problem, because Hickory Boulevard is a, you can't really park things along the road in the season especially. The side streets, as you know, are narrow. Some Pat McCords, uh, Irish parties would prove that. They had to get people parked where on construction sites, literally, get them over. So, I'm for doing, one other thing I think we need to do is allow more, a longer hour of operation where they're at a fixed point of view, because right now, I think it's something like a couple hours. So I think we have to do that as well.
Counsel, Amy?
I think, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, I've tried to put a little time into this, uh, regulation and think about, and we, we got a number of emails about it, I talked to a few people who, uh, are interested in food trucks, and as, as often the case in things that we do with regulation, it's not straightforward and it's not simple. It sounds like it's really simple, but it's not. And when I listen to what the mayor said is, and I agree with a lot of things that he said, that, I think, I look at this in two ways. There's, as John had said, things that are more permanent, you know, that, like, you picture Celebration Park, where people go to a, an area and they park, and they have all these food trucks, and they basically know that's a location for food trucks. And then we have some that are kind of temporary, that go from one place to the other. Then I just learned, and I didn't know this because, I mean, I love beer, but I don't go to craft breweries, because I just get mine out of a bottle, I'm sorry. But, uh, evidently, these, uh, evolution of craft breweries, even though they're bricks and mortar, they often have food trucks to provide the food for them. I, I never even thought you needed a food truck, and so this was like a new idea for me. So I think to do a, a regulation, there are all these iterations that need to be addressed, I think, in different ways. Let me start out by saying first, that in my opinion, in, on Hickory Boulevard, for deed, uh, deed restricted issues, there is no way that we should have a regulation that overrides, I don't think we can anyway. You could ask Derek, but I think it's, we're not allowed to do this. So unless we want a lawsuit, we should exclude deed restricted issues in regard to, uh, food trucks.
Amy, can I interrupt you? Derek, your thoughts on what she just said, so we can move along, point by point?
We can't override deed restrictions.
Yeah.
No.
But, the other thing is, you know, and I had this conversation with, with Councilman Forbes, he asked me a question, like, should we be conferring with property owners regarding deed restrictions? That's another thing I advise against, because the reality is that some deed restrictions may have a process for waiver through an association board, some may have, may have been expired, others may have been waived routinely for one property, and it'd be, it's a way to get us sucked into something we shouldn't. But if you're, if there are areas where it's generally accepted, for instance, if Hickory Island already has a prohibition and there's no desire to change that, then just leave it where it is. So, wouldn't be a prohibition based on deed restriction, just be a prohibition based on, it hasn't been a use out there, there isn't a clamoring for that use, you know, let's just, let's keep it out.
But we would have, we, we would have to recognize in the regulation that it does not, if we do a general regulation, that it doesn't, it's not intended or can override any deed restrictions in regard to the.
Right.
All right.
We don't have the power.
We don't have the power. So I think whatever.
We wouldn't be enforcing them.
Get in touch with, you know, have Derek, you know, if we are going to have these regulations, be sure that it does not over, try to override. That's my first thing. The second one, I definitely think we should have more, the number is wrong. What that number should be, who knows, you know? A part of me says that we should let the market determine what that number should be. Um, and when we get to the point where we're starting, we're talking about selecting sites, I think that's impossible, you know? I don't know how we would do that. We'd have to get a lot of planning input to it. I mean, there are things that I think would be nice, but maybe that it wouldn't be economically viable, so, again, I think it's difficult to go forward. So, I think we would need help from the planning people to tell us how we could define, uh, you know, parks, you know, what kind of characteristics would do that. I don't see.
Maybe, yeah, maybe, well, I think one of the things that, that John was talking about, and maybe to help elaborate, just trying to come up with how to draft this, would be, taking the parks issue aside, you made, you made a very good point about the temporary, like, special events, there's a, you know, it could even be a restaurant or what do we call it, asking for a food truck for a special event, that we can, we can handle that as one type of use. But looking at the code that you've adopted, you, you've got two areas of regulation. You have a regulation on the site-specific, and then you have regulation of the vendors from the health and safety issue. I don't think we've had any desire to change those issues. Those are regulated, I think everything's fine there. So the question becomes, should we really be tying a number of vendors, basically, I want to call them like medallion holders, and saying, they're the only ones who can do this, or should we really be addressing the impacts on the neighbors, which is really what the rest of your ordinance does? So, in that case, if we came up with, maybe not a special exception, but some kind of conditional author's process for authorizing locations, then, you know, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be tied to any particular vendor. Like, we could still require that all vendors register with the city, but, so that they understand what the rules are, but it would be tied to specific sites. And so you'd have a group that would be temporary, this is gonna occur once, you know, or maybe twice in a year, and a location that's gonna be repeated, repeatedly used, in which case there could be notice to adjointing neighbors, we could set up special conditions for that property, you know, and, and then you'd have a whole nother class would be, would be if you were allowed parks. That would require planning exercise, but this would be, you know, you've got a property owner who wants to do this and have a regular rotation, they wouldn't have to try and find the X number of licensed operators, they would just say, "I want to get a conditional use permit for this property to allow food trucks." City staff would look at it, make recommendations, it would either go to zoning board or to you, say, "This is the place where it's authorized," and then we'd have conditions to authorize in that location. If it's particularly close to a neighborhood, you could have, you know, timing restrictions, noise restrictions. If it's far away, if it's an area that's, you know, more rural, and maybe it's serving a different type of market, uh, then maybe those, those conditions could be more relaxed, you know? But it could also then look at traffic issues and, and other concerns.
Yeah, and then also, like, um, well, I definitely think they shouldn't be parking on the street, you know? I think they need to be on some kind of private property or some, you know, I, I don't think they should be parking on the street, and I think parking is gonna be an issue. And I, I would recommend that we follow these conditional kinds of things where we're protecting the neighbors, which is sort of like what we do in zoning, to make sure they're not being affected by whatever's gonna happen. Because it is the case, you know, neighbors might not want food trucks, even if they want to go have food, they want to go to someplace else outside their neighborhood to get the food truck. So they're gonna want to go to a commercial place. And I know that some restaurants like the idea of a food truck, because it's kind of like a, you know, taking their, their service outside of their community. So if they have a, a bricks and mortar restaurant and want to have a food truck there for some reason and bring it out, you know, maybe we could be more lenient with that. And I, and again, these, these microbreweries, I mean, that was a surprise to me, they would need a more permanent kind of thing. I don't think they envision having different food trucks, but maybe they do, because I don't know that business. So, you know, I, I think there's a lot of conditions that need to be explored, and I think it'd have to rely upon you, because I don't know how we can sit here and decide. I mean, colors, you know, all this stuff, I, I don't think I'm capable of doing that.
I, I think that what we would be looking at is, is situation where city attorney's correct, you would provide conditions that would be in place for someone to come forward and request that location. I don't think, I'd be comfortable saying, "I've identified these locations within the city that someone should have a food truck or a food truck park."
And we also should have an out somehow to get out of this, if we run into trouble. Is it, is it gonna be a permanent kind of thing? What if, what do we have to rescind our, our permits? You know, what do we do there?
Correct. Well, what I think that we're looking at right now, and, and going down the path, and I don't think it's the only path, but it is one I've discussed with several of you, is, as opposed to permitting the number of trucks, you're limiting the number of trucks, we look at limiting the number of locations. So, for the sake of argument, the city wants to have a food truck in front of City Hall. And I know that's not gonna be the case, but maybe Arlene has, wants to raise revenue, I don't know. So, we ask to have a food truck in front of City Hall, the permit will come forward, you would show where the food truck would be located, uh, the hours of operation, how people would, would, uh, access the, the truck and still operate the site. Whether that is approved administratively or through a hearing is up to you, and then that site would then be permitted. If someone owned a truck, then they could come in and say, "I have been inspected, I have all my licenses and certifications, I would like to operate my truck at City Hall under that permit that's been issued by the city." And under the current discussion, and like I said, it's just the current discussion, not the only discussion, you would not necessarily limit the number of trucks that could operate or be licensed at a site, you would limit the number of trucks that could operate at one time. So, if you had, for the sake of argument, and keeping numbers simple, ten trucks that were permitted on the site, those ten trucks could operate there between the hours that the city has authorized, and only one truck would be there per night. It would be up to the landowner or the permit holder to determine which truck was there, or to determine if a truck was there. But you would not authorize more than one, or you would specifically authorize the number of trucks, I say one, uh, but that's up to you, whether it's one or more. And that would be what the conditions were, it'd be just like any other zoning approval that you would have, type, size, and location. So you would be authorizing the location of the truck, the number of the trucks, the hours of operation, how people would park, how people would access it, when the truck would have to leave, when it could show back up in the morning, all of those things could go into it. And to answer some of your questions, a lot of these jurisdictions that have put regulations in place, put some sorts of regulations on how the truck operates in terms of features that come off the side of the truck, they generally don't allow them to operate on vacant lots, they generally have to be improved properties, they can't block pedestrian or vehicular traffic, they can't create an attractive nuisance. There's, there's a standard list of conditions that, that most places have adopted. We're really not reinventing the wheel, a lot of those can simply be added to your existing regulations. But I think the thought of going from limiting the number of trucks to limiting the number of locations could be a positive, uh, step forward in how we're looking to deal with the situation. If the council agrees with that, then we can start looking at places where those locations If the council agrees with that, then we can start looking at places where those locations could be and how we handle that. So I don't know if there's, at this point.
Why do we have to limit locations? Why can't we just, as sites come up, then people present to the city and then we decide then?
You have every authority to do it however you would like. You don't have to limit the number of locations. You could simply come up with design criteria for anyone to come in and then be approved.
And I don't think we should go rigid because difficult doing business with the town is not a good reputation.
No, it's not.
So, but concise is what we need. And that's what people ask for, concise and consistent.
Yeah, I think, I like the idea of permitting.
Amy and then Fred.
Of permitting the site. I think that's really good, and then you could stick in whatever you want to do for regulation. And I kind of feel like it's good to let the market determine where the locations are. But I also think it'd be good to have a limit on the number because there might be the case that you, similar to the regulation in regard to limiting auto-centric businesses along the quadrant area, because you don't want this concentration. And then if you have an unlimited number of sites, then it becomes an entitlement. So if for no other reason to sort of guide that, so we could have kind of a big number, or maybe we should start with a number and then increase it over time as we see what happens.
Some people have a de facto number simply because they require a separation between trucks. And that by itself, they require a distance separation between mobile food vendors. And as a result, if you limit the.
So that prevents you from having the concentration?
Correct. It just means that you're going to have a certain separation. Correct. Yes, ma'am. As opposed to having a hard and fast number, you generally just have that regulation which tends to lower the.
But ditto, this is complicated.
Fred and then Laura, I think you might have something else.
Well, first of all, we found another revenue. We could have one out front. The revenue stream out of it. I think we've got two different animals we're talking about. Momentum Brewery type of situation, which is going to be the more common in the city, and then a food truck park. I think the food truck park should be a, something where they have to come in front of council and you have a hearing. Because you're affecting a big, you could create a lot more noise there than you have any idea. And if you, that is going to be a problem if it's close to homes. Whereas one or two food carts or food trucks at a location like the Momentum, it's not creating a traffic problem. The food trucks in itself don't cause noise or shouldn't. So that, it's too different. That should be able to be permitted by John Domer. Food park has got to be a zoning thing where, or a public hearing where we do it like a special exception or something like that.
If I can be bold enough to.
Oh, one other.
You might want to keep those two, maybe we deal with the locations of trucks separate from.
One other thing, before a food park hearing, there's got to be something like we do with a development where they have to have a neighborhood meeting, and they got to notify those residents. So they know about it, and they have a chance to come in and express their point of view to council. There should be lots of places in the community where we can put something that's not going to be a problem and would be an asset.
Thank you. Laura?
No, I was just agreeing with what Fred just said, but I didn't have another comment.
Okay, Mike?
Yeah, actually, I'm very happy with what I'm hearing up here today. I think we do need to open up the, our regulations on the food trucks. Not in favor of a hard and fast number on the number of trucks and not so much of the location either. Running a business, you know, we don't prohibit how many bike shops can be there now. It's all up to, you know, it's healthy competition, you know, to let the best person win. So, you know, some, 10 more bike shops could open, and they're not all going to make it. Same thing with the food trucks. So if you have locations, there's going to be locations that don't pan out.
Or food trucks that don't pan out.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. So.
I bet Derek and John could work out something and then we can fine tune it.
Yes.
That's fine. But in terms of just direction for this, I'm okay with what I'm hearing. Do we want, it doesn't sound like we want to have a set number of locations. It sounds like we're looking at maybe design criteria for this? Or do we just want an approval process and not have locational criteria? Because.
I guess there's got to be some kind of.
And parks, are you separate?
This is just the trucks. I'm not talking about the parks. Correct.
Separately, I think we do need to start working on stuff for parks because.
Well, then we're going to get to that one next.
That's going to be separate. But as far as the location, I think the size of the lot would dictate how many trucks could be there at a certain time. You know, if it's a very small lot, you may only have room for one truck, but if it's a bigger lot.
Limited locational standards.
Yeah. Put the standards on the locations, whether it can handle one, two, three trucks, whatever. And then you mentioned that some of the places do spacing in between locations. So we've permitted one place to have it, the next place has to be so far away from that.
Okay.
And what do you do about, like, sanitation? I mean, does anybody have?
They have to have everything on their truck.
On their truck?
And through regulations, they have to take care of everything that they carry on their truck. They can't dump, you know.
But you don't have, people don't come and have tables where they sit or anything like that, or?
Well, that could, there is no rule unless you make a rule. So right now, nobody would be able to come out with picnic tables or temporary seating unless you said that was something that was permitted, generally because of locational restrictions of where they would go. If you're looking at having a developed site, most of the parking or most of the site is dedicated to a use, whether that use is for infrastructure or for the building. There's not a lot of vacant areas that where a food truck would be located that you can just simply dump out temporary seating or equipment. Not to say it's impossible.
Yeah, and I'd say be careful about requiring that because places like office complexes, River Chase down the street, a lot of people would go out to the truck, get the food, and then they go back to their office to eat. So I don't think you really need to have.
No, I just wondered how you would handle what the requirement, he's talking about putting requirements on the site. So we don't need, we don't want that kind of requirement.
At this point, unless I hear differently, I was not planning on allowing or making permission to have someone bring additional seating or.
Correct.
Attachments to their truck.
Yeah. No, and I think, you know, like I said, there's difference of opinion here, but anytime something is new or something is changed, I mean, it's human nature to maybe be skeptical or certainly want more information. And I don't think this is any different in a sense. We're a modern community, we're a thriving community, and we're soaring to new heights, quite frankly. And I think despite hearing that we're difficult to do business with, like I said, anybody that's having a problem, and I'll just kind of make a blanket statement on anything, please get ahold of me. I'll work through any issue and I'll work with any person, but things that I don't know about, I can't get involved with and try to fix. Certainly here, I've been tuned in, but I'm sure there's other things going on that I don't know. But the reality is, you have a mayor and you have a city council up here that wants more business, wants more options, wants rules that everybody, look, everybody likes structure. I mean, everybody likes their freedom, of course, but people like parameters. People like systems in place that work, that are business friendly, don't distract people. I go back to the noise thing. Food trucks aren't rock and roll bands, and food trucks are not microbreweries, and food trucks are not trying to save the environment, improve water conditions. Separate issues, separate issues. Not to pander to anybody, but I think we need to keep that clear. Everybody would love a new restaurant in town, a brick and mortar restaurant, right? Like Mike said, people might like another bike shop. But I guarantee people want more places to eat, they want more options, they want more things to do, they want other places to try, they want somewhere they can walk, get something fast, get something good, and move along. So it's time to expand our thinking. It's time to, the 2012 ordinance is old, it's antiquated, it's out of date. We didn't really know what to expect back then, per se. Things were evolving. We didn't really know what to expect when those typewriters became electric that turned into computers, right? So this is an evolution that's moving forward. I look forward to what you guys come back with. I think you've got a sense of where we're going up here, and I look forward. And absolutely, food truck versus food park, two separate animals, and want to keep them separate.
For food trucks, and I'll make this real quick because I know we'll kind of get into the end of this discussion, but for food trucks, did you also want me to provide a path forward for those to be approved, I'm assuming by you all as a council?
Yeah, I mean, oh, absolutely.
The sooner the better, like, let's get them done.
Yeah. No, absolutely, that would be good.
No, no, I want to be clear, his question gets answered. Do you want to see the actual locations, or do you want that to be approved administratively with maybe?
No, we want to know what they are. I want to know what they are.
Well, I've always approached the parks as outdoor restaurants, and I think, I've told several of you that, that's nothing new. There are different impacts, there's different considerations, and there's different mitigations that you need in place for a park that you don't see for a truck. And so that's why I've looked to always keep those two entities separate and to keep those permitting processes separate as well. So if council is interested in that, I'm happy to include a path forward for those parks separate from a simple truck or two-truck operation.
Right. Fred?
One last caveat. Approving a site, which you would be doing, nobody gets a site approved as a non-conforming use. So we don't get into that argument. If non-conforming use, you're not allowed to expand. If you put a food cart in there, that is an expansion. So it's simpler to say it in the.
Expand on that a little bit. What the councilman's saying is that for uses or sites that are legally non-conforming, the food truck would be considered an expansion of that non-conformity and therefore would not be permitted. That simply means that when somebody opened up a site, developed a property, it was legal. From the time that it was legal, the rules have changed, and now they're non-conforming with current regulations. Normally, what we require is at a certain percentage of change, they bring that site into compliance with current regulations, because we don't allow for an expansion of a non-conformity. This would be treated the same way. The truck or the park could be considered an expansion of that non-conformity and therefore not permitted.
And the Momentum and places like that would not be a non-conforming use. Very few of those in the city, but we don't want to accidentally let a food cart go on those.
Laura, did you?
Yeah, I didn't understand, so we're going to see the spots before?
That's what I was trying to clarify.
What I would like to present, and it's still just formulating, but I think that both the locations and the parks should come to you for approval. Once those sites are then selected and approved, we can go through the administrative process, and so that way, engineering would be done administratively. But also, the trucks that would be permitted for a specific site would be done administratively. However, you would get to look at where all the trucks wanted to go, and if a food truck park wanted to locate somewhere, you would also approve that with details that you normally see in zoning.
Mike, did you have anything else?
No, I definitely.
No, Amy.
I definitely agree about the food parks, and I think as a preliminary, because I don't know how many of these we're going to have, we should see how the regulation is working, once we get the particulars. And if we come, if it comes before the council a couple of times, we'll see whether we're, that's why I think it's a good idea, even if we grandfather that provision later on.
We are on the same page. I think after a while, you'll determine if you want to keep seeing these or if you just want them done with the locational standard.
You know, because we don't want to have to approve every site that only has one truck on it. And I assume that when we approve these sites, we're going to, there's going to be a fee involved and stuff like that, so you're going to come back to us? Or there's not going to be a fee involved?
We can discuss that when the ordinance comes back.
Yeah, do we want a fee involved? Is there a permit fee when we're, for the truck?
I think it's, I think it's $25.
So it's minimal, okay, all right.
Locations would probably, would be more.
Okay.
No, and I, you know, I guess, and I don't, not sure if council has anything more to say, but I would just say, like anything, like with what we're doing on the water, like what we're doing downtown Old 41, like we're doing in so many different areas of town. Look, you either follow, you lead, or you get out of the way. You allow economy to thrive or you try to stifle an economy. And I have no desire, nor does anybody up on this dais, have a desire to stifle the economy. This is a new way that's evolving. It's a new way of thinking, it's a new way to bring in revenue, it's a new way for less road, or less cars on the road at lunchtime, so people don't have to run and get their lunch, they can stay in the office, as it's been alluded to here. We're rolling with the times here. We're a city that is on the move. We're thriving, we're doing things better, we're hopefully more approachable, even though we're accused of being hard to do business with, I want to get rid of that myth. I don't want to be hard to do business with, but there again, I go back to, it will never, ever be the Wild West. Those days are over. Everybody likes structure, and I want to allow our economy to thrive in a new segment, in a new way. And I go back to my typewriter example, nobody ever thought the computer would work either, or the horseless carriages. So extreme example to make the point. We're a modern society, and we're going to, we're going to move through this in a modern way. Thank you, John. Okay, what do we have next? We have item E, which is a presentation by Stan Tech Consulting Incorporated on the Bonita Springs Skate Park and Pump Track Project, and authorize staff to submit a grant application to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, FDEP, for grant funds to construct the skate park and a transfer of park impact fees funds to provide the required match. And this is green sheet number 20-01-012. Hi, Arlene.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. We'd like to bring you up to date on the community outreach that we've done. As was alluded to before by some of the speakers, we've had public workshops regarding the skate park to get input as well. And we'd like our consultant, Kevin Mannan with Stan Tech, to give you an overview of the project. At the conclusion, we are asking for action to move forward. We do have the opportunity to apply for FDEP funds. It is a 50-50 match, so we would have to provide for a budget transfer to make that 50-50 match out of the park impact fee. So we would be looking for action at the conclusion of the presentation. With that, I'd ask Kevin to come forward.
Great, thank you. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Council. Appreciate you having me here this morning and our group. It's always been a privilege to work with this city, and we've been able to do that in many ways, engineering, landscape, architecture, environmentally. This morning, I'm going to introduce not just the work that we've done, but this bit of a unique aspect, niche piece of the company that really works in what we call action sports activities. And so oftentimes, this is park and recreation driven, but it's certainly community driven, and gives you things like skate parks and BMX tracks and things like that. So briefly introduce that team and our own history to that, the history of the skate park, and just speak to that briefly. A little bit about the design process, and then a couple images of the proposed park. I'm responsible for the project management here locally. Two of the gentlemen I work with, each one has been in front of a public workshop process, Mike McIntyre and Jason Melling, not here today. They actually work out of our Texas, Austin, Texas offices. They are experts in the skateboarding and BMX design work that we provide. And they come to that honestly. They grew up as kids loving to skateboard and all of this, and through the process of growing up, going to school, coming out in the A and E field like I am in, have sort of transferred that passion into this niche group that we call action sports. And the group, like many of us, are well-versed in the work that we do. We've got over 200 public sector projects that we've done. We work across the U.S. and internationally. Public workshops and consensus building is a large part of what we do. And again, this multi-action sports experience that comes into place is really very attractive, and we heard that today earlier in public presentation. The states in red show where we have actually successfully helped design and build in the communities over these, over 200 skate parks. Some of the examples, I mean, it's interesting. Some sites you may not think of. That on the left is actually the Charles River in Boston, and it's under the freeway. And so you can see these parks take on different shapes. Actually, and this one is intended to be, all sorts of user groups, age groups, and sometimes they're long and rectangular, sometimes they're round. And it's all really about the space and the site that you're given. So basically, in the simple story here and the history of our skate park here in Bonita Springs, we have an area outside the recreation center that was originally a skate park. And that was lost during Hurricane Irma. And so all of the facilities that were within that skate park were removed. And what we're left with is really the concrete floor that existed then, that was a part of that skating park, and was the skating floor. It's a little under half an acre in size. It is self-contained. This end and edge here is all vertical wall, and then from here is our arriving gate, and then we're fenced in back to here. So it's a self-contained element as we speak of. And the image in the upper right actually shows the condition today. Really sort of waiting to receive, you know, what's next, if you will. Really, sort of waiting to receive, you know, what's next, if you will. Here's an image of the pre-hurricane Irma skate park. One of the unique differences in what's being proposed in the work we've been doing versus what we had here, the facilities at the time, the original park, were all wooden features. And the wood features take quite a pounding. There's a lot of maintenance, ongoing maintenance that goes on in those facilities. A lot of the features that you see here, right in the foreground, the bowl to skate in, the quarter pipes, the rails, all these different areas to jump and do tricks and ride to. And again, whether you're on a bike or a skateboard, all of that exists. You find folks on scooters and other things in these parks too. So, it really does lend itself to a variety of users. So, we began our process about five months ago now, almost to the day. And we first met with an interested group over at the recreation center. And we sat down and really spent some time, first introduced ourselves, but spent some time talking about what that park would be. To sort of spur that conversation on, we started with a couple of bubble concept plans and some graphics of what's possible here. In this case, the first diagram, we really saw, you know, a 50/50 split in how the space was used. But again, we're always entering the park here. The pump track would be generally a reference to the bike space of the area. And then the skate park would be, again, more skateboarding. But there's a real intermingling of these groups too and cross-use. And so, we pay that attention as we move through the design process. We presented that to the group to gain comments. Number of things that the group saw that they liked, some things that we felt maybe, maybe we needed to do differently. And same workshop, we presented a B concept where the skate park was a little bigger. You see planting areas and things that were later removed for more skating and more biking area, which I thought was a great contribution, if you will, from the group. These things sort of fell away. But we began to demonstrate the different ways that we can go ahead and put things together inside the park. And so, that was our B concept. So, we took the time to draw and take notes and go back and forth with the group. And we really came away with some key, there's key takeaways out of that effort. Larger skate park, I think, was desired really by the group. And it didn't, we didn't say how much larger, but a little more skate than the pump track. Moved the landscape outside the fence line, which really is reasonable for a variety of reasons, but it really, it gave the predominance of the activity into the space we had. The spectator is important, so arriving, parents watching the kids, these sorts of things, all have to be part of the park. And interestingly enough, immediately out of, out of the group was this idea of, you know, what sort of opportunities into the future might artwork present? We took about a month, created some new ideas based on what we were hearing from that group and came back and we actually met here in chambers, provided a second presentation to the group and again, split up, really right here across the table and continued to work on concepts and drawing things out. The group was, is anywhere from, I'm guessing that the youngest was about 12 years old, all the way up to John and Aaron, who had been here before, who admittedly are also skaters and bikers too. So, we had a nice representation, nice cross-section. And even more loudly out of this group, really came that call for a cross-use experience for bikers and skaters to be able to do both in the entire park. So, now, even though we're dedicating certain portions of the park and still looking to pump track and skate area, we're really talking about transition. So, on a day-to-day basis, how these spaces are used may change based on the group that's there and generally just the etiquette of using a skate park. I likened it, I am not a skateboarder myself. There's not enough bubble wrap in the world. But I likened it to skiing, snow skiing. And, you know, there is an etiquette on the hill. Certainly, there's hills you go on or you don't go on based on your skill level. But there's always people of different skill levels and different speeds and it works and they work this out together. So, again, we moved through concept C and a variety of things are taking shape here. Sort of the low ground level areas, mid decks, upper decks through here and the ability to skate and roll down. The concept D was really starting to get to what I think the group wanted, really being able to skate all the way along this wall. This is not a structural wall, which we have had to keep in mind during design, but really be able to work right up to that wall and use the entirety, again, of the park in the process. So, we went through in some details, some of the actual features of the park. This is an example of about 20 images of different park features that we've created. And that group on the second workshop really gave a final set of thinking and direction to what we've been working on since. So, the key takeaways, we actually got down to feeling a two-thirds, one-third area distribution was right. Use all of the skate park space like concept D, right up to the walls and edges. Consider the common use in the skate BMX and that there really is that cross-use effort going on. And that it was clear at that point in time that we would be here today with you to request the funding that we are in fact doing. The skate park itself, the entry, gated entry is here again. We come down and in this covered area, the spectator area is here. And the skate park generally is all of this. And then the one-third dedication of the pump track is here. And in sort of three-dimensional form, that is what we're looking to put in place. A little different orientation, but the gated entry is here. You move down into the space and the zeros and the numbers, this is, this is the elevation above the floor that we're talking about. So, zero is our floor elevation. We've got our spectators, our main body of the skate park here in front of the spectators. We've got a mid-deck here. We've got an upper deck at four. This bowl brings you down to zero and back up. And then the pump track, much like the word might suggest, it in and of itself is not leveled, but moves up and down and allows for a variety of tricks and other things to happen. So, with that, and since the late September workshop, we've been working on detailed drawings. Those drawings would accompany the funding applications that are made and a number of other things. And so, we're here now requesting that your approval to move forward with that based on these designs. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
And Mayor and Council.
Yes.
Both Ellie and Nicole are here. Should you have any specific questions on the grant application or the budget transfer?
Okay. Ellie, or maybe just, what's it looking like countywide, statewide for these type of grants or just a little, your thoughts in this direction? Thank you.
Sure. Good morning, Ellie McEwen for the record. The DEP, it's called the Land Water Conservation Fund and it's National Park Service money that comes out. They divide the applications in two distinct areas. One is new construction, which scores higher versus renovation, scores, you know, second. This would be considered a renovation because we're leaving the concrete pad in place. But we can beef up the application where there's a deficit to show, you know, an enhancement as well. So, it's kind of 50/50 on whether it's funded or not. A lot of times, it depends on who else in the state gets funded, so we just don't know. We just need to make our application as strong as we can.
Brad?
What would it cost to pull out that foundation to where we'd qualify it new?
Part of what we're looking at is using some of that foundation to structurally support and build on what we have. But about half of it comes out for particularly those new areas that are at zero because we need that depth, if you will, to create zero again, recreate zero. That would be about, it's about 10,000 feet based on the area. And so, I would suggest that's about a $20,000 cost to take the additional out.
My question would be if it's significantly higher probability of getting the grant, if it's new, I think I'd rather see the park than keep the old foundation.
Yeah, and I think that's a great point, maybe one that Ellie and I need to speak to a little bit more in a strategy because with that then comes added cost of building foundations that we were going to use previously. But I think your points will take.
Well, and on that point, if you don't get the money, it doesn't do anything anyway. So, if you had to get the money, you can do the foundation. How many people are in this little study group? Just roughly.
The initial group was nine or 10, if I recall, but the second workshop closer to 30.
And is it one of these things, is it chicken or egg? Does the foundation have to come out before you make the grant application for a new, new, brand-new structure? Or do we see if we get the grant as a brand-new structure and then take the old out? How does that work?
I will say this. Since we are providing drawings to the application, I believe it should say so in the drawings, how we're approaching it. I'll leave that.
Absolutely. If we're, if we're going for new construction, then our plans should show that all of it, all of the existing foundation should be removed.
But does it have to be removed prior to the application? You can show it.
Oh, physically, no.
Okay.
No. It just needs to be shown on the plans.
It's on paper.
That's good. Details, details, right? We just went through an exercise where the death will be in the details, so thank you. Council, do you have anything else?
I think we should move forward to get the grant. But I have a question. Could, could a food truck go there?
An off-road one.
Yeah. After we build the skate park, I think it'd have to be outside the fence line, but that would be, again, up to your rules and regulations. Certainly, the recreation center is blessed with a lot of things, including the parking to support, you know, an activity like that.
I believe since we own the site.
Brad and then Amy.
I believe since we own the site, we can approve the food cart without a public hearing or anything.
Amy?
I just want to compliment the design. I think it's very interesting. And I can't believe that bikes go up and down those little bumpy things. Do they come out alive is what my question is?
They do and sometimes they're not touching much of those bumpy things because they're all, you know, in the air and jumping.
Jumping from one to the other.
It's incredible lots, yeah.
Pretty impressive. But anyway, you did a great job and I like, I like the idea of expanding it out to the limits of the lot. And then we could certainly landscape outside of that.
Thank you.
Mayor and Council, as the grant is due January 31st, we wouldn't have the opportunity to come back to explain or to go through the difference of removing the asphalt or not. If you would allow staff to work through the process of which one is the most cost-effective in your approval, and then we can advise you afterwards.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Wonderful.
Good job.
Council, anything else on this item? Great. Thank you very much. Okay, we're now going to move on to mayor and council member items. Actually, there's nothing there. I apologize. Public comment. Members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward at this time.
This item does actually require a vote, but it lasts on the StanTech.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion to approve in a second. Is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCorumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCarr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Great. I apologize. Now it's public comment time. Thank you.
Dwight Essman, Paradise Road area. Talk about the CBRE RFP. How's that for stringing initials together? You have two small parcels next door to the Depot Park, the Banshell Park, included in the Bamboo Village Imperial Crossing RFP. I hope one of you will ask CBRE what they estimate the value of those lots is currently versus what they might be worth if you wait until the Imperial Crossing property has been developed. My suspicion is that any developer that might want to buy them will simply turn around and sell them later for a higher price. And personally, I believe you ought to hold on to those lots so that they can be parking for downtown events. Speaking of parking, at 9:00 this morning, there's no parking out here. So, at some point, I think we really have to think about increasing parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none? City attorney items. Derek?
The only item I have for you is at the last meeting last year, we discussed the payment of attorney's fees in the WCI, now in our cases. We did not make that payment. We're still disputing several issues. I'm not asking for one today, but I may ask for, at the next meeting, to set an executive session to resolve some of those outstanding issues.
Okay. Great. Thank you. City manager items. Arlene?
Yes, Mayor and Council. We wanted to provide one last opportunity to review the request for proposals with CBRE. In the proposal, you'll see that it provides for site details, development guidelines, does provide some local market information. It does have the weighted evaluation criteria and submittal instructions. It also offers an opportunity for written questions. The intent is that upon council's approval today, that this will be a live RFP as of tomorrow. The website is up and running, so additional information is there. And at this point, we'd be looking forward for your direction to open the RFP tomorrow.
Okay. Certainly, I think I brought this forward, I forget exactly when, but we have some wonderful properties down there that are looking, you know, to continue that momentum down here. Councilwoman Simons was here and you know how many millions we've spent down there. And looking forward to opening this up, looking forward to the proposals that we receive, businesses that can come in, possible residents, whatever the case may be, food trucks, heck, who knows what might come in for proposals. But really looking forward to that. And I have, I have looked at this. Is there anything, I guess I would say kind of as a broad question from a staff point of view, Derek, or a legal point of view or policy point of view, if you will, that would seem overburdensome for anybody submitting an application? And I'm curious because I do get asked, I've been asked several times now, hey, where do I find the information? And I know we're just getting ready to get live here, but, you know, is it going to be accessible on the website where people can find it? Or do they have to click through seven screens and down five subsections? I'm just trying to ask it the wrong way to make the point of how people that might be interested can get ahold of this information.
So, Mayor and Council, if you wish, we could include an e-blast out as well on this. We would have it on the homepage and it does have its own separate website that will go through each of the criteria as well. And that is live right now. That webpage is live right now.
Okay.
Additionally, one of the things I think that's important to communicate, this RFP does have heavy weighting on the financial responsibilities of the parties.
does have heavy weighting on the financial responsibilities of the parties, and I think that would be important as we went through several iterations of the Wonder Gardens in finding folks that were in a position to move forward in a partnership. And this has the CBRE group assisting staff in reviewing those materials and providing the recommendations. And then, at that point, we would be providing the recommendations to council for oral presentations of the folks that you like the oral presentations for, and the final decision, of course, is city councils.
Right. And certainly, we hired this group because we have every confidence in the world, as do I, but Derek, from a legal point of view, anything you see, any bells or whistles or flags?
No, I mean, there was a request in the public comments earlier about possibly shortening the window for response on some of the RFPs. I mean, generally, I found that that actually probably is a barrier, not an inducement. So I would say probably not to change, not to shorten anything.
90 days.
Give people as much time to address things as possible.
Right. Okay. And I get back to the, I would be in favor of an e-blast to our list if council's okay with that, you know? This isn't a secret. I want people to know.
The other thing...
Is it then, is it, I'm sorry, Amy?
Just let me finish this point about getting, we have a, I'm going to talk about this in the council thing, but we're going, a number of us are going to the general meeting for the Horizon Council, and we have the opportunity to have members say something. So if the staff, and I'm the representative, if the staff has something ready for me, I can point out and point them to the website.
And I did want...
And we'll have people from all over Lee County coming to that meeting.
And I did want to advise also, LeAnn has told us that over 40 folks under the current website that's open have pre-registered to receive the information tomorrow. So we know 40 agencies that have pre-registered at this point.
And then, is it public information if somebody puts in an RFP, I want to buy, you know, the lemon tree property? Is that then public, that I've made an offer?
So I'll let Derek go through the public records portion of it, but typically during the RFP process, it is not public until...
Yeah, nothing, until the bids are actually opened and selections, there's no disclosure.
And there would not be disclosure during the subcommittee review as well until it moves forward to council as well?
Well, the committees themselves would be open to the public if someone wanted to engage and watch or request the minutes, but the actual proposals, until they're all looked at at the same time, that will not be open to the public.
So who saw the committee?
We'd be working with CBRE, and then staff would be involved with the first committee providing the recommendations to you for you to shortlist your presentations.
And I have a question for you, Derek, because, and I'm sure others have been approached too. It's one of these things where, yes, obviously, city council's intimately involved with this, but when people are approaching us, hey, what should I do? How should I do it? It's like biting a poisonous fruit for any of us, so that's, if you could just kind of give us a brief there?
Once it's released, since you are the final decision-maker on this, there's a cone of silence.
Right. Code of silence, that's the...
Anyone who either talks to you directly or tries to talk to you through a proxy risks their bid being disqualified.
What's it make us risk? No, but I mean, and I wanted to make that clear. I think that's common sense, but we all want to be helpful, but this is one area, starting tomorrow, we cannot be helpful. Check out the website, is basically all we can say?
Yeah, and it goes for all the selection committees or any purchasing people, CBRE staff. There can be a formal process for asking questions. Those questions get sent out, and the answers get sent out to all the interested parties, but as far as one-on-one communications or trying, you know, I'm sure a lot of people who are interested in properties are not used to the bidding process, but the risk is high, and of course, every other potential bidder would like to disqualify as many of their competition as possible. So it's just that, you know, the first thing is if someone starts down their path, I want you to be disqualified.
Yeah, no, absolutely, absolutely.
And that includes our staff as well.
And what I think Dwight raised the issue, or concerned, somebody buys a property with the intention of doing it, but they don't really, and they want to flip it once Imperial Crossings is developing. How do you prevent somebody from just holding on to...
You know, each proposal's going to have whatever their particular unique issue is. And so if you have someone who's come, and I've seen this before with economic development, if you, someone comes in and say that, I'm interested in this property for redevelopment purposes, and I'm, you know, I'm asking for a reduced price, or I'm asking to the possibility of, select me because I'm going to build something in 18 months, and I'm going to get development jumpstart. We can put reverts or conditions in, so if they don't meet their obligations, then the property comes back to us, or we get a, you know, percentage of any resale within so many years, something like, you know, there are ways to trigger that kind of, you know, rent-seeking behavior.
CBRE has an interest in seeing the project to fruition because they participate in the value of the project, so a built-up, developed project is much more valuable than one that's not developed. So they could help us to, you know, to look at the proposals in that way. I think we can prevent that.
And, well, that is a part of the agreement that we have with them. They would bring us all the way through contract negotiations as well.
Counsel, anything else? Okay. Do we want to vote? Obviously, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second to approve the RFP for our downtown lots, Green Sheet 2001016, and there's been a second. Further discussion, counsel? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman McCorumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
And we're going to send it out to our email list as well. Okay. And do you have something, Arlene?
The last item I have is I did speak to Carol Green, and that our bill, our request, our legislative request is moving forward smoothly so far through the process. I do know she had a communications with you all to see if anyone would like to go to Tallahassee. If you would like to, if you could let myself or Carol know, she just wants some advance notice to set any meetings that may be necessary, or if any of you are traveling up there for other reasons, want to participate with meetings with her, she's happy to help with that as well.
Right, Arlene, and I would just ask, if you wouldn't mind, you saw the communication where I'll be going up there for a mayor's meeting already, so I'd like to piggyback with Carol and make the most use of my time up there on our behalf. That would be wonderful.
Sure.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Can I piggyback with him?
Yeah.
Piggyback. 425 miles, six hours, no matter which way you go. And if you fly, it's the same amount of time because you have to connect through Jacksonville or Atlanta, so. Fred, did you have something? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just want to give you a thought when you're up there. Why don't you, because I took that approach at the Florida League of Cities thing, talk about the bioreactor and tell them that's a good reason to invest in the city of Benita on water.
Right. Follow lead or get out of the way on the water.
No, no, they, they all like that.
But the bioreactor is a byproduct of us, and we've gotten zero money from you, so help invest in us because we're good. Right.
You can additionally provide some information on the state grant we've asked for.
Right.
That's a decision from the legislature as well on that.
No, absolutely, and Matt, not to put you on the spot, but any updates or thoughts on the bioreactor? And for folks that don't know, we're, I think, I really feel on the cusp of something very special here.
Really, just to echo what Councilman Forbes said, that's some of the feedback we've received, is if council, you know, we have that grant application and we can provide that information, but if you feel fit to talk about that, because that'll help us with getting that money.
No, absolutely, and thinking, Matt, back to some discussions a month or so ago, some meetings that we were trying to set up on the East Coast.
There hasn't been any feedback on those.
What, no feedback?
No, other than to talk about it at the legislative level.
But if you, when I'm up in Tallahassee, if we could, you know, schedule the meetings that we might need to with, I guess, Senator Galvano and the senator from the East Coast, and I'm not recalling who that was.
We'll reach out to our consultant who had some leads on that and see if there's an opportunity to match your trip with who they suggest.
Sure. No, absolutely, and I'm not afraid to go up more than once, but I'm not there to socialize, I'm there to take care of things, so whatever it is, just load up my schedule, please. Anything else, counsel, or any other items, Arlene? Okay, you're in good shape. Mayor and council member reports. Amy?
I've been doing a couple of things. First of all, I want to mention that I did participate in the Shabbat of Benita and Astero ribbon cutting, where they opened their new center, and also attended their kindling ceremony, and the mayor was there, and I think Fred was there too, right? And I was able to give a few words to them in welcoming them to their new site, and I found it worthwhile that we had so much city representatives there because it was right after, there were problems with the Orthodox Center in New York, and we could celebrate the freedom of religion that we honor in Benita Springs, and we made a statement there. So I really, it was meaningful to me, and I think it was meaningful for the people there because I got feedback from it, how pleased they were that we were all there. So it's a good addition to our community, and it's right opposite the jungle golf place, if you, that's where they have their center there. So that was good for me. I also, as I attended the Horizon Council Executive Meeting, since I am the representative, and I note that their general meeting is January 31st, and I think some of us are going. The speaker there is Dr. Lawrence Burns, who is an expert on autonomous vehicles, so I think it'll be a good meeting. And then, as I said earlier, it's an opportunity for, in the member comment period, if there's anything we want to say about Benita Springs. And one of the things that I've been trying to emphasize when I go to these executive meetings, that, you know, Benita is just not a name in Lee County, that there are things that are going on, both the water improvements that we have, I continually mentioned the Spring Creek Project, which dovetails very nicely with Lee County, so I think that's what my job is when I go there. But we have the opportunity to do it again on January 31st. So if there's any messages we want to send to the public there, please let me know, and, you know, I'll be glad to read our message. But I will definitely do the one for the downtown area development. And also, just yesterday, it was so, so long, I would think I was just there, that Arlene and Matt came with me to my home community, which is Pelican Landing, and we gave a presentation to our residents there who had been asking for information about Benita Springs. And I have to, first of all, compliment the contributions of both our manager and our city manager. It was very well received. I think we gave an overview, we used our strategic objectives to talk about the policies that we and the council have set, and the efforts that were made to implement those objectives. The feedback that I got already from last night was that they could not believe all the things that we're working on, and they were impressed with the professionalism that was shown. So I think we hit a home run, I hope we did. We were able to answer some questions that were touchy, and it was a very, very, very good experience. And I just want to personally thank Arlene and Matt and recognize them publicly for the wonderful job that they were doing and how they represented us so ably there. And I just, coincidentally, I continually, I continue to meet with the candidates for our vacant two and district seats. Again, what I customarily do is take the objectives, and we talk about each one, because once they get on board in March, we all know we're going to be running pretty hard. So it'd be nice for them to ease their way in, I think, because I think we're asking them, having two new people in there in a sort of an odd time of the year, I think I'm concerned about doing the, we've done good work, and I just want to continue that good work, so. And that's it.
Great. Thank you, Amy. Laura?
Friday, 3:00, at the fire station on Benita Grand, we have a changing of the guard ceremony, and Greg DeWitt, who used to sit here, will be officially named fire chief, and Chief Dankels is retiring, so it'll be a wonderful ceremony. Public's invited.
Great. Thank you, Laura. Are they cookies?
No, I don't know.
Cookies. Mike?
I'm good, thanks.
Mike, Fred?
Oh, the, as you know, the session has started, and there's two kind of interrelated bills. I'm going to get Derek to take a look at them unless he already has. One is vacation rentals, and there's another one where you can legally enlarge your house or put an accessory building on your property. And the consensus is that if they do that, that accessory building could be a rental unit. I would think, I'd like to think, that our existing setbacks and all that, some other stuff, would not, would be able to circumnavigate what they're trying to pass. I think it's likely that they will pass that, but I'm going to ask everybody, when I get the details, to write a letter to the committee saying no, because more is likely to result in a no.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks, Fred. And Laura, you touched on, the first thing I wanted, Chief DeWitt, on Friday, the ceremony, the passing of the baton, if you will, I guess, which is very well-deserved. As you know, he started as a volunteer with that fire department, and now is the chief, so it's really just a hometown success story. Although I can't be there, because we'll be snowmobiling up in northern Maine, by the way, so I do have an excuse, but this is, this is our fifth annual up there in the woods in northern Maine. There will be no Patriots game nor a Buffalo Bills game this weekend, this AFC Championship weekend, but we still go up every AFC Championship weekend. So Chief DeWitt, congratulations for everything that you do. The Shabbat ceremony, Amy, was wonderful. Rabbi Greenberg and his whole congregation there, certainly wonderful, wonderful people, and it was a very special ceremony. Matt, just continue to keep up the great work with the bioreactor. I look forward to those discussions at the county level and certainly at the state level. I think Benita Springs is on the cusp of something very, very special here, and hopefully we can expand our efforts modeling with our legislative priorities this upcoming session. Update on Big Cypress. As you know, we've had several discussions on the Big Cypress Water Basin and taking politics out of the process of where the boundary should be. And I am proud to report that we've had several meetings, but the most recent with Representative Ray Rodriguez and Matt and Arlene and Jim Bosch, the former mayor, current councilman, because they're on a rotating system of Astero, had a meeting. There will be a request for funding up in Tallahassee so that we can get the water districts together to figure out the science of where the water line and where the water boundary should be, not just a nice straight across-county line for convenient and political purposes, but we're really going to have a time-sensitive, I guess, if you will, request for the committees to get together and draw scientific boundary as opposed to a political boundary. So it's been, it's been an interesting six to eight months because there's been several meetings, and you can, as you can imagine, opinions are like belly buttons. Everybody has them on every subject, and I can assure you, this subject is no different. There are several opinions, but we're going to get a scientific boundary as opposed to a political boundary to solve the problem. Chairman Chauncey Goss has been very supportive of this. I've had, as I say to Chauncey and Representative Rodriguez right now, finally, hopefully, one of these days I can quit bothering you about this, but obviously, it's very, very important for our community and other communities to get the water right based on science. This past weekend, I was out at Captiva Island for the Everglades Foundation meeting, conference, if you will, met people from around the state, actually, and some from around the country in terms of our water. I saw Secretary of the Environment Noah Valenstein, he certainly knows that I'll be coming up to Tallahassee to speak with him. Chairman Chauncey Goss was there, and just several other folks from around the state. And there was a lot of excitement, there was a lot of enthusiasm there. And while you're preaching to the choir, generally at a conference, people are there for, either they believe in the cause, trying to do business with the cause, what have you, but the excitement, quite frankly, of, and you've heard me say it before, the stars, the moon, the earth and the planets are aligning with the water. The funding is coming, folks, the funding is on the way. You've seen what the president has done, the U.S. Senate, the United States House, Governor Ron DeSantis, the Florida State House and the Florida Senate. There's a lot of money coming, and so while that is very, very exciting and amazing news that's been years, years in the making, I asked the folks that kind of implement this, I said, are we ready for the money? As funny as the question as that may sound, and the answer is a wholehearted yes. The systems are in place, the teams are in place. While they're certainly going to be looking for people to actually, I guess, through the process, do the work, there have... do the work, there have been applications, RFPs, the system is ready to go. And I just want to commend everybody that's maybe even tired of hearing me talk about this. Thank you, because we're, we're on the cusp of this happening and becoming reality for our Florida Everglades. And I think that's what I have. Council, do you have any other comments? Okay, so we're going to move on to approval of the minutes, I guess, from December 18th.
Second.
So, moved in a second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
And public comment. Anybody, any member of the public that would like to speak at this time, please come forward. Bonnie? Great. Glad you're here with us.
I'm Bonnie Whitmore for the record. I'm going to take you up on your offer to work with me because I run into a brick wall trying to get my occupancy for the McLean House. I've been on this journey now for three years, and it's all caught up because somebody put an X in the wrong box on my paperwork. Now, I have people coming in. I had twenty people, I have thirty people. I walk them through downtown, and I'm getting letters back. I'm so proud to walk down the streets of Benita now, and that's what we need to do. But for some reason, in this two-year battle, and I know the fire department works one way, community development works another, but I need someone to help me figure out how I can have more than eight people in a building that's classified commercial. And that's not what it is. It's a venue. It's a museum. And I have, oh, it just so frustrates me. So, I want to spend time with you, give you the paper trail, the people I talk to, and all the paperwork and names, because I don't want to give up. Now, want to continue opening that? That is a beacon. I finally got the light from FPNL, so it lights up at night now.
Looks beautiful.
But I don't want to drop dead before it's used like I want it.
No, absolutely, and if you, Arlene, if you can work with Bonnie, we'll get a meeting set up and.
It won't take long.
Consider it done.
But I've been on this for two years, and I want to close it so I can move forward.
So, that's, that's an awful long time. You shouldn't have to wait any longer.
In this city, it's ridiculous.
Yes. So, work with Arlene, Bonnie, and we'll get together and talk.
I don't, it won't take more than ten, ten minutes. But I don't have the paperwork and names and all that with.
Do you want to mention the auction?
Pardon me?
The, do you want to mention the auction that's coming?
Oh, yes, yes. By the way, we have sold the Casner home, which was the pump house for the first development in Benita. And we have an estate auctioned off the antiques that are in there. So, I've rescued everything because part of what I want to do on this land is have a Benita museum, which we don't have. So, I've saved the good things, but other things are being sold, and that money's going to put right into that lot over there, so it'll even shine more. So, if you want to show up, walk over on Riverside, might be something there you want to take home.
On Saturday?
Saturday, eight to two. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Bonnie.
Sorry for that. I try to be positive, but. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay. Seeing none? Motion to adjourn? We are adjourned. Eleven fifty-four for the record.
Very good.
Here we go.